Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let everybody know that we're going to have a couple of modifications to the agenda because of some timelines that people had. First thing we want to do is get, well, we got to get Flavia on. Can I have a motion to approve on exceptional circumstances and all those other things?
Yep.
Motion is second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Welcome on board, Flavia. Hope you get feelings.
Thank you.
You got to watch the people you're running around with. You can get a lot.
I know. I know.
First, first order of business is, Bob, you and I get to stand up and take the oath of office.
And I just want to mention that Flavia also did get sworn in because she's ill. So I swore her in at her house. So.
Thank you, Laura.
And you're not contagious.
I didn't touch her. I didn't touch her. I stayed within my cushion. Alright, so I'm going to do, I'm going to do adds. I'll do like the first chunk of the oath and then I'll give you each your parts where you have to say your title separately and then we'll finish it together because you do all the same except for that.
And our title is our seat number?
Yes. Alright, so raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and government.
The Constitution and government.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the state of Florida.
And of the state of Florida.
And that I am duly qualified.
That I am duly qualified.
To hold office.
To hold office.
Under the Constitution of the state.
Under the Constitution of the state.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Perform the duties of.
Perform the duties of.
And we'll do, Bob, you first. Board of Supervisors, seat two.
Board of Supervisors, seat two.
Gateway Services Community Development District.
Gateway Services Community Development District.
On which I am now about to enter.
Which I am now about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
And then add, Board of Supervisors.
Board of Supervisors.
Gateway Services Community Development District.
Gateway Services Community Development District.
Lee County, seat three.
Lee County, seat three.
On which I am now about to enter.
On which I am now about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you.
I didn't have the lead.
He has, he has.
Well, you're not real. He's invalid. I'm sitting here for hours.
I need you to sign here and here. So there's two places. So here and here.
Sign both of those places?
Yes.
Where's the other one?
How quickly we forget.
Right here. Signature.
Yeah, signature. Oh, wait, no, no, not that.
That's not me. It's down the bottom.
Yeah, down here. That's me.
Oh, you did. You told me wrong.
Yes, I did. That's why I was on.
And then you got to send this along with $10 check to State of Florida Tallahassee. Okay, though. Thank you. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Roll call. Everybody's here. Flavia's on board on Zoom. Approval of the final agenda. Any changes? We're going to make one change to move up 11A immediately, even before public comment as there's a, we have a time problem. Any other changes that anybody has?
No, make a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve final agenda.
As amended.
As amended.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
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 Thank you. We ready for him?
Yep.
Russ, jump in.
So if I could just intervene real quick. We had a miscommunication on the timing of this. Thought there was a workshop. We did not schedule a workshop for this specific item. So what we're going to do is we're going to wrap up the waterway management category from, that we had a week or two ago. And then the roadway component portion, we will take to the December 5th meeting as well as the Parks and Rec and Admin.
At 2:00?
At 3:00. Or 1:00. You want to do 1:00?
We better, we.
At 1:00.
That's going to take time to do both those together.
Correct. That's why it'd be 2 hours.
We will re-advertise, yes.
1:00 on give me today.
So 1:00.
December 5th.
And it'll give us 2 hours to do.
Yes, 2 hours to do both.
That gives us 2 hours to do both.
Yes.
Great, great.
Why, why not start at 2 and just finish this a little further on?
That means you start your regular meeting at 4 then?
No, I mean, why are we doing?
You started 2 and go to 7?
No. Why are we compressing it? If we don't do roadway today, then on the 5th we do roadway. And then whatever the next meeting is, then we do the next one.
Because we're under a time.
There's a issue that's coming up on the bids that we received that have a component of the park of recreation that needs to be done so that we have that.
Then do that, then move that one up.
Then we got problems with the bids.
The other part of that is, I'm under a timeframe too, to make sure that we have the draft methodology by the 3rd week of January.
I don't care if you have about 3rd week for February. I don't care.
I understand that, but I set this schedule for everybody to make sure we hit those. We just.
I'm not trying to be antagonistic, but we missed a week, so everything gets pushed. We push things all the time.
But we, we've got a problem on a timeline relative to the bids. The bid holder period does not let us do that. We got to, we got to accelerate it.
Can, can, Chelsea, can we not adjourn this meeting and just continue this meeting to, let's say, Tuesday of next week? And then that we'll touch one of those items on Tuesday?
I am in town.
I didn't hear what she said.
She would like, what about continuing to next Tuesday?
I'm okay with that.
I don't have a problem.
And date and time certain.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait, 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 wait. It's Thanksgiving, isn't it?
No, Tuesday is not.
Oh, you want to go Tuesday?
Tuesday.
Tuesday, okay.
That's fine.
At what time? Because I have an appointment at 10:00. I won't be back till 1ish.
Russ, how does that work with you?
Are we, are we, so I fall back into the same spot or are we doing a workshop is the question?
I could jump back in at 3:00.
Well, if we do this as a continuation, we would just have you.
Do roadway next week.
Do roadway next week and then do.
You tell me the time. This room is 3:00?
Oh, yeah. 2:00 would be fine too.
I'm, where I'm totally open.
I'm fine. Tuesday?
I'm fine.
2:00?
Tuesday at 2:00.
I'm trying to do that and try and compress. These things need to be fully aired. I don't want to be rushed through it.
Okay.
I'll probably come another time.
So this is Tuesday. We're going to do a continuation at the end of this meeting, Tony.
Date, time, location certain.
Yes. Go to 2:00 next.
70.
Tuesday, which would be the.
26th.
Not today's, the 25th.
24th.
Yeah, it's going to be about the 26th.
The 26th.
No, the 26th is Thursday.
No, the 28th is Thursday.
Tuesday is the.
Tuesday is the 26th.
Tuesday is the 26th.
The, so Tuesday, 2:00, the 26th.
Yes.
And a continuation of this meeting and specifically for Russ for roadways.
Mm-hmm. I can do that.
Everybody agree to that?
Yes.
Do I need a, I don't need a motion to that.
At the end, you know, at the end of this meeting, we're just going to take that action.
Got it. Russ, you're on.
So you want me to do, do the water management now?
You're going to do an update to the, to the water management.
Right.
Thank you.
For the record, Russ Wire Real Estate Econometrics, your assessment methodology consultant. And if, as you recall, at our workshop a couple of weeks ago, there were a couple of questions, but primarily the question had to do with the flowways and how we were, is everybody benefiting from? We went through that whole discussion and the board, at the board's direction, we were to go and take a look at the flowways and get the, yeah, current, well, we talked about these. Currently, OO1 pays for all the flowways in the district and Area 9. And do we want to continue that? And that was one of the questions we had. And the second one was currently Pelican funds collect the waterway management revenues for the properties outside of the gate. Do we keep them outside the gate, inside the gate? That we will talk about in a minute. And then currently OO1 pays for all maintenance of Area 9, which is the property that's across 75 on the west side, which is a collection area. And then should.
So Russ, I guess my first question would be, what would be the reason why we would not continue the way we had done it, the way it was done previously? What has changed that would cause us not to do it the way it was previously, the way the methodology was previously done?
Yes, Mrs. Pinkow. So, so that you understand, the board's direction was to take a look at this from a, from a financial perspective, to say, from a benefit, I shouldn't say financial, from a benefit perspective. And we, we did that. We looked at them all because, because Pelican does pay a portion of the flowway, they pay for the flowway off of Basin 6. There, we got a budget number for that, which I will go through in a minute. And then OO1 paid for all of the others, which we got the budget numbers for, which I will show you in a minute. And, and when we put those two together, and then I did it among everybody, all of the water management acres as we had determined. Remember, we went through the pervious, impervious surfaces of each of the properties. And Pelican Reserve had a certain acreage for water management, Gateway had a certain amount for water management. So we ran those numbers through that and you'll, you'll see the results in a minute. If you go to the next slide for me, please.
Yeah, I have one other, one other question. Just, do we have a choice?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
We could, we could stop maintaining Area 9?
No, 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 no.
No. Oh, you're, no.
Okay, that was, that was my question because.
Tony made it clear at the last meeting, much to our chagrin, that the people who contribute water into the system that are outside the district, we can't do anything about. Is that correct?
Other than, other than. Yes. Other than trying to get them to comply with their permits. Like Colonial has the responsibility to maintain the flowway between Tree Line and I-75.
And I-75.
Yes.
So that's the only one that's really contributing that has come to the table with any cash?
Well, that's my understanding, but they've not come to the table. But.
Well, at least they're contributing.
But, but you're asking for Pelican, which has never contributed, to now start contributing.
Well, what, what we're trying to do is correct.
I know what you're trying to do.
Correct things that were done erroneously a long time ago.
No, 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 no. Here's the deal. We can only force Pelican to pay, but we can't force Arborwood, Plantation.
No, 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 Arborwood we can, because they're in our community.
So they're, they're going to start paying.
They got to pay.
Arborwood 23, there's an Arborwood outside the district.
Arborwood 3 is the only thing that contributes to our flowway.
Correct.
So we don't, we can't go to Arborwood 1 and 2 and ask them, I'd like to have them do it, but they are going to do it.
What's, what's very clear is we're talking about, as far as scope, anything that falls within Gateway District. Correct?
They were changing, changing.
As far as historically.
Existing.
As far as collecting monies and or assessing.
It has to fall within the district boundaries.
Yes.
Yes.
But we never have before and now we're suggesting we do it.
It's purely an O&M issue. It's not a debt issue, none, none whatsoever. It's an O&M issue that there are basically multiple contributing parties to the flowway. Okay? All of them except 2, and Colonial maybe 3, are the only ones we can collect from that use it. That's us, Pelican, and Colonial. And what we're saying is, is that right now, heretofore, the OO1 account has paid for all of the O&M costs associated with the flowway within Pelican and the flowway outside of Pelican on the other side of I-75. I believe that to be.
Okay. With the, wait a minute, with the exception of Basin 6.
Now, we're talking Basin 2 and 3.
Basin 6.
When we talk the flowway, it's the basic flowway, not pond.
Right, and that's, let me go through my, my.
Well, we need to get through it a little bit before we go.
Okay, alright.
We have never, in Pelican, contributed to the flowway. It has been stuck out our throat a couple of times because when we told residents, we're not going to allow you to remove the torals from the flowway, the district came in and said, that's ours. And they let the residents do that. It was totally against what the Pelican Preserve Ponds Group wanted to do. So you can't have the hat on both ways. You can't say, we're going to tell the residents they could do something against the wishes of the Pelican Preserve Ponds Committee. And then turn around and say, oh, well, wait a minute, we'd like you to pay.
Look, that, that's an issue that is separate from the issue at hand.
They're all together, Ed. There is no separate.
We can negotiate what the costs are and what the maintenance is of the flowway. The issue is, is that right now, is what is the distribution of the share of the cost?
Why should it change? It's been this way 25 years.
Because it's not fair in Ecuador.
Not fair to who?
Not, not fair to us, that Gateway are paying our.
You guys were doing it before we were there.
I'll make the motion that we proceed with having a distribution of the flowway into the OO1 and OO2 account on the operation and maintenance on the basis of the calculations of stormwater management by Russ going forward.
Do we need to go through?
Let me go through it first so we understand what the implications are.
Well, Bob was trying to.
I'm saying there's nothing to talk about.
This makes a big, this is a big decision. But the thing is, I think we're talking about $43,000.
I don't care. Well, then let it go and we'll move right on. Keep doing what you've been doing.
Can we get through Russ's presentation?
Let me finish so you can see what the implications are.
Hold on.
Let's go ahead. Go ahead, Russ.
Order. You had a motion. Call for a second, please. Because you made, you made a motion. So the rule of order is you need to call for a second. If there's no second, the motion dies.
Is there a second to my motion?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Flavia's second the motion.
Open for discussion.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor.
Why do I think this vote will be 3 to 2? I just, way out there.
We're going to do this stuff fair going on. We're not going to do this.
Fair is your point of view.
We're not going to do this anymore.
It's not fair to the residents, but it's fair to your point of view.
I'm going to call the motion. All in favor say aye.
Wait, we didn't have discussion?
Wait, is Bob the, like, it's for discussion. Bob, you want to speak?
Or do you want to have Russ present?
What's your discussion, Bob?
Well, my discussion is, I see no reason that we should be changing this. We've been doing it for 25, you know, you keep talking about Rule 6 was 25 years. Why, what is the benefit to change it to anyone other than the Gateway people?
Because your community is contributing water to that flowway just like ours.
So is Plantation, so is Botanic Lakes.
But we can't try.
And so is.
But the difference is, Bob, is you're, you're within the district. That's, we're not, we're not talking apples and orange, apples and apples.
Let's just go off the boat.
No, hold on, hold on. I'd love for you to table this. And just until we get through.
The presentation?
Yeah, just through the presentation. I, because I want to look at the numbers so I can understand the, the impact. What you're talking about is in principle, in principle, if you sit within the district, then what we are talking about is, is what's fair and equitable for all Gateway residents regardless of what communities they sit in. The assessment methodology then determines what percentage, which goes back to the whole reason we're talking about benefit. So there's, there's 2 different things. It's not historical. It is basically, if, if our philosophy is today, that Gateway as a district, it's fair and equitable across those lines based on benefit, then we determine the percentage. That's what we're trying to get to. I just want to get through the numbers before we vote. And I understand Pelican is saying we have never done it before.
And I'm going to say, I would be very much in favor of assessing all the contributors. And if that means they have to take them to court, then I'm behind it.
Yeah, but we don't have any control outside of the district.
Sure we do. We take them to court.
Well, then that's a.
Bob, just put it straight. From the standpoint of properties outside the boundaries of the district, which the district has no authority to assess, in my humble opinion, we would not have any ability to obtain any court relief to make them pay, except that we may have the ability to get South Florida Water Management District to make sure Colonial Country Club, CDD, maintains the flowway between Tree Line and I-75. But it's not, it's not a matter of them necessarily paying this district, but it's not, it's a matter of Colonial doing what they're supposed to do under their permit.
But if the board wanted to say, we feel like, just hypothetical, because what I would say is Pelican and Botanic Lakes is not the same. Pelican sits within the district, Botanic Lakes does not. Now, we could talk about.
Consider, Timber Creek?
Yep. So, but if we wanted to say, we feel like they, they should be, we would like for council to, you know, proceed with some legal avenue. You could do that, even though what you're telling us is it's highly unlikely based on precedent and the way.
Not ju, not just that, but whenever a lawsuit is filed, it has to be filed with a good faith basis that there's a facts and law to support the position. Absent that, what happens is, the other side could send what's called a 57105 Safe Harbor Letter. 57105 is a statute that says if you receive, if you have a case that's frivolous, not supported by law or, or facts, and, and I'm paraphrasing now. And the other opposing counsel then says, files a motion to dismiss, sends the Safe Harbor Letter and says, you've got 21 days to dismiss this action. We're going to go after you, the law firm, and you, your client, to pay our legal fees for having to handle this frivolous matter from this point forward. And if they prevail, then they go back to the court and say, Judge, please make Woodward, Pierce, Lombardo, and Gate Reserves to CDD pay the legal fees we incurred.
But your advice is, don't go down that route.
But there's no way we can prohibit flow into our system.
Well, that's the whole point.
No, no, I don't get it. Back to.
Plantation is sending us a lot of water.
Back, back to that. I think I've mentioned before, and Stephen Agapi or any other water management engineer can advise me if I'm wrong, the South Florida Water Management District issues permits for flows of water, surface water, based upon historical flow patterns of the land in an undeveloped state. So Gateway is downstream of Timber Creek, the historic flow pattern. And so that's why Gateway has to accept, from a permitting perspective, the flows from Timber Creek. I've also mentioned in the past, like Pelican Marsh in Collier County. Mercado is outside the Pelican Marsh CDD. I don't even know where Mercado is. Right next door is the Pelican Marsh CDD. The historic flows go from east to west, uh, west to east through Pelican Marsh and meander up through the Coochahatchie to the north. Pelican Marsh has to accept that water from Mercado. Now, what Pelican Marsh did was they said, we don't want, we want to make sure that the water quality coming in from Mercado is not going to screw up our system. So Mercado, we will maintain your surface water management system in Mercado if you pay us the cost of doing that plus a modest admin fee. Mercado says, sure, because Mercado is the permit holder, that developer is, whoever the Colliers or Lutkorts are. You're familiar with that. But again, that, that's a situation where that's how the projects are permitted from water management perspective in Florida.
But the same thing. Plantation, excuse me, Plantation.
Okay, I have.
Built. They were not built when we, the district, was maintaining.
Nor was Timber Creek.
Stay focused where I am, please.
Okay.
It wasn't there. Now it is there. Yes. And you're saying we don't have any recourse to make them pay something?
That's correct. We, the recourse we have is to make sure they comply with their permit, which is what?
I, I don't know. I don't have the permit.
Oh, the permit requirements. Tony, I, I don't know. I'm just going to go back. Probably about 8 years ago, when we had the conversation regarding the same exact subject, which was Colonial Country Club and Southwest Florida, holding them accountable for the permit. And that is, like, we, we talked about this. And that was the, at that time, and I, either 6 or 8 years ago, that was the only thing we could do. And even with that, we weren't really successful. We pointed out some concerns and, and I do not recall Colonial Country Club coming to the table and even doing what the permit items that were required to maintain.
It was, it was at least 5 or 6 years ago. The, the.
Yeah.
This is based upon what Tony has indicated to us and what we've heard before. People like Timber Creek, the airport, Airport's a major contributor to us. They're coming across, they got 6 24-inch pipes that come right across into Daniel Parkway into us. You've got the deal coming into the, from the south to you guys at Fridgetown. And then we have, on the other side of the road, the school, and we have.
Yeah, I'm not so sure if the school from Tree Line goes in or not.
And I guarantee it goes in, in court, in part. But the issue is, is that as we understand it right now, we don't have a dog in the fight to collect money from them.
And again, if I recall correctly, in my mind, when the district first went to the Water Management District and did its water management report way back in 88 or so, and I think Russ may have been in West Coast at the time, was that the, and it's the old Johnson map that shows the flow.
Yep.
Big arrows.
Johnson map shows.
It indicates where the water is coming from. And it comes from the east, comes from the south, and, and so.
But it doesn't say a thing about who pays for it.
That's correct.
So the, okay, so, so we can move forward with Russ's thing. It sounds like our, the course of action we would take is with Southwest Florida, with the water management.
As to Colonial Country.
As to.
For Colonial, Plantation, well, but that.
I have no problem with what Bob says because I argued this thing years ago. But it seems to me that what I remember then, we were beating a dead horse. They basically told us, you are going to accept that water. It was in your original Johnson plan and in the Southern Johnson plan. Live with it. Is that simple?
And again, from Colonial perspective, the ability, believe the district has, is to go to South Florida and say, South Florida, please engage in a compliance matter as to Colonial Country Club, have them pay for.
And Botanica.
No, no, okay. Have, have them maintain that section between Tree Line and I-75. I am not, I don't believe the Botanical Lakes, or the Mike, I just go back and look at my memo, whether they have the obligation to maintain any part of that flowway or not.
But they're a contributor, that's why.
Well, but that's different than if the permit requires them to maintain it or not. They may be a contributor. Again, let's go back to the Mercado example in Pelican Marsh. Mercado did not have to pay for it.
Russ, Russ is on a timeline. We got to get this going.
Russ, you, you disagree with any of those?
No. Does the permit require Pelican Reserve?
You're part of our permit.
You're part of the Gateway permit.
So I guess the answer is no.
Go ahead, go ahead, Russ. Let's get this going.
Says Gateway.
Okay, thank you.
The permit, the permit says Gateway.
And not Pelican.
We are the permit, get, the CDD is the permit.
Sorry? Nope, I'm not going to say that first. Quickly, the, the assignment, if you recall, was we were talking about the flowways. And everybody was saying, well, everybody benefits from the flowways. So the board sent us off and said, well, let's take a look at the flowways. How much does it cost for each of the flowways and maintaining them? And then let's use our methodology, our water management calculation to see what the results were. And so staff was able to get the information for me. And here are the budget items, as you can see on your slide. Area 9 is roughly, you know, $19,000. The general flowways are 12, 13, about $20,000, somewhere in there. So it all comes out to $43,000. Then if you look under Pelican Reserve number 2, that's OO2 account, they pay for Basin 6, which is $12,000.
We always have that, right?
Yeah, and that goes into that column. And then Gateway OO1 paid for all of the others, including Area 9. So essentially, it's $12,000 to $31,000. I'll give you the next slide, please.
This is, that's current state?
That's current state. Correct, correct. And if you recall, and this is the current methodology that's in place, the water management had, had totals for the amount of acreage that's impacting the water management system. In total, Pelican Reserve, which includes the golf course, everything else, the, the commercial ones on the north side, Gateway includes all the commercial, the golf course, and all of that. Essentially, Pelican Reserve is 306.83 acres and Gateway has 645 acres that's impacting the water management system. As a percentage basis, it's 32.22 and 67.78. When you reallocate the budget, it comes out to $13,880 for Pelican Reserve and $29,195 for Gateway. So if you look at the Pelican Reserve differential, because I know that was one of the things that, that everybody was wondering about, it's only $18, $1900 more that, that is benefiting Pelican Reserve than based on what the current allocation is. So you flip through the next slide.
I wouldn't use the word benefit.
It's, I'm determining benefits. Next, on the, on the flowway budget and the assessment analysis, what I did is I took the single-family homes, the multifamily, including C5, and then, and the water management acreage percent of those. The, turns out that the single-family is 52.7%, but multifamily C5 is 16.7%. And the commercial, the golf course, is roughly 30%. And the allocation of that $1,800, as you can see, becomes $990 for all the single-family units, $313 for the multifamily, and for the commercial ga, and golf course, all of that is $575. If you divide that by the number of units in Pelican Reserve for single-family, it comes off to 59 cents more. For multifamily, it's 31 cents more. And all of the commercial, it's 575. That was the assignment. And that's what we found.
Okay. Well, questions, board?
No, it's pretty straightforward. And this is including, the numbers that we're looking at right now factor in that we would be paying for a one, for the flowway at a Pelican, correct?
Yes. Well, wait a minute.
You're just getting your pro-rata share. But the thing that you're going to do is, we got to take Basin 6 and pull it out. But the thing that you gotta do is, we gotta take Basin six and pull it out.
It is, it's out of there.
It's, it's out of the calculation. So you're now taking and having a distribution of, I believe, the 31,000 into OO1 and OO2. That's all we're talking about. And by your calculation, what it works out to be is something like 59.60 cents.
It included flow, or included Basin six.
Basin six shouldn't be in it.
Well, there's, there's a flowway up there that's $12,000 that Pelican Reserve.
Hold on, hold on.
Wait a minute, wait a, wait a minute.
These costs, these costs here are only the opera, as I understand it, the costs here that are identified in the budget, 43076, 12,000 of it is the cost associated with O and M of Basin six that has nothing to do with nothing. So the difference is the 31,076. That's the actual cost of Area nine and the flowway itself that is not inclusive of Basin six.
You can't exclude Basin six because it's part of the overall water management.
Not excluding, I'm just saying that.
Well, it's a cost.
That's, that is not an, that's not a cost that's on the table for discussion.
It, it.
It is.
Essentially, essentially, that's a part, 12,000 is a part of the Pelican Reserve budget. Wait a minute, wait a minute.
But it's not a shared cost with OO1.
Not now, no.
Yeah.
But it's got thrown into the entire amount, all the flowways, we talked about, everybody's benefiting from, everybody's benefiting from, that, that's all, that budget is 43,000.
So it's gotta be in there.
It is, it is in there. And then, what we're redoing is, we put the 12,000 in with the Gateway, and we're allocating based on the water management impact among all the units.
Okay, I just want to make sure everybody understands, if we go that route, then everybody in Gateway has got a percentage of investment in the operation and maintenance of Basin six.
Of course they do.
Even though it's not on our flowway and has nothing to do with our flowway.
There isn't, there isn't an our flowway. It's one being community.
I understand, that's where I'm, that's where I'm going. That's where I'm going. Okay, so, okay, go ahead.
And that's where, if we hold the philosophy that anything that falls within the district boundaries is fair and equitably distributed amongst all of the EAUs.
Right, whether you directly or indirectly benefit.
Correct, and, and that's particular for the flowways, because we, you asked Russ to pull that out independently.
Okay.
And look at that. And so, it, it's basically what we're doing now.
It's simply important as a board, as we go through, especially this conversation as it pertains to Pelican, that we have a guiding principle, and there is a, there is a common statement that we are holding ourselves accountable to, which is, and, and I don't know if this is exactly it, but anything that falls within the district boundaries, uh.
Shared by all.
Is, is shared, is shared by all.
Correct, it's just.
Because that's, it's gotta be good for the goose and good for the game.
I agree. And the, the, I guess the supposition that I thought some members of the board had was that Pelican wasn't paying their fair share of the water. We've always paid it, but we just paid it through OO6.
Yeah, and, and there's been some cases in the past where Pelican has, uh, you know, funded certain things and kind of managed it, you know, where it may have been absorbed and, and paid for as the greater good. Now, we can't retroactively go back necessarily, but that's where the percentage, based on the benefit, is gonna be really important for us to determine what that benefit is and the percentage that's calculated within the assessment methodology, because that has to be fair and equitable as well.
Your deal blended everything.
If we did not repeal Rule Six, if we did not, the Pelican people would have benefited 59 cents.
Correct.
So I just remember what we said of talking about Rule Six.
And we could say adversely that all the people in Gateway would, would be paying an extra 59 cents.
Correct, correct.
And that's what we have to look, that's what has to be defendable for both sides.
And the whole point of the original objection to repealing Rule Six before we understood it was something like this.
Yeah, and that's what we have to get away from the.
Okay.
We have, we have, just get away from the, the mentality that it's a, they're not paying, or we need to pay more, or whatever. It's, I, I think the philosophy is, we are trying to, to come up with a methodology that fits the district as a whole.
Right.
That's equally distributed, that's fair and equitable and defendable.
Yeah. So Russ, what do you need, based upon storm water management, what we've just had presented? What do you need from us so that you can?
Well, it, it's a board decision. I mean, if, if you want to pull those out, we have to separately budget that, and I will allocate it and it will show up in the final methodology. Or, um, you can leave it as is, it's up to.
To do what just basically Bob and Doug both said, it's all a part of the district, and we take and do just what you've done on this calculation. As far as I'm concerned, that, that's what we go with.
Yeah, and, and that's fine. Now, now, what, what, and, and to Doug's point, it's, that's why we're going through this whole process now, is everybody benefits from everything within the district, it's just how much of a benefit, and that's what we're trying to measure now.
There is an alternative, that we could stay with the current methodology that we have and reinstitute interconnectivity. That is still a viable alternative at some future time.
But going forward.
With the economic impact.
Yeah.
Right, how we're going through the assumption that we're gonna do this, but that doesn't mean.
Right, right now, the storm water management, management portion of the assessment methodology, with this discussion, if we agree to go with what you've done, where we're throwing all of the costs in, and then letting them distribute out based upon the, the, the areas and the acreage, this is the result.
This is, this is the result based of, on the flowways. We're still, when, when we were doing the, the original, when I did the methodology of the water management system, we were still going on the premise that Pelican Reserve had their budget, Gateway had their budget, and we were, we were basing the, the.
And that's all really. If we're all in an agreement to this, is there anything else you need?
Wait, wait.
No, 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 I wouldn't. Don't go that far, don't put words in our mouth.
Okay, that's a very different question than we're all in agreement with.
Okay.
Do you have a motion on that?
Okay, I was gonna remind you guys to have a motion a second on the table.
Back to the motion, then, that we accept the, I was gonna do it a little bit differently, but I will, I understand what you're saying. I would make the motion that we go ahead and accept what Russ has presented as the methodology for the distribution of costs related to the flowways as presented.
And Area nine.
I'm sorry?
And Area nine.
And Area nine, yeah.
Tony, do we need any more specifics to that?
Well, wait a minute, now, if, I think I heard the motion, we're now accepting the full burden for Area nine, which I don't. I, I can accept the methodology.
No.
To be considered, but not to implement it based on that.
What, what the motion is, is to approve what Russ presented, period.
What does that mean, approve?
Yeah.
For him to proceed on the, a basis of the assessment methodology of storm water management on this particular item.
Yeah, this act, today, the board cannot adopt this.
Yeah.
The board can give direction to move forward with the premise that this is the, sort of the baseline in the, in the approach that would be taken as Russ works his way through, and, because the public hearing won't be until next year.
Correct.
Yeah, because, just like Russ says here in the board discussion.
The board can always change it at that time. Once again, this is just.
And that's all I'm saying, is at some future time, we'll, we'll vote on adopting.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, yeah. Just saying that we agree for Russ to proceed with the preparation of the document based on this that you, you presented.
This particular item which the board asks us to.
At this moment in time.
Yes.
Down the road, if there are different what-ifs and whatever, we might come back and readdress this.
All, all of that comes back on the table later day.
Do you have any more questions for us? He has to be in there, he was at four o'clock.
So, Flavia, do, do you second the amended?
Yes.
All right.
I'll call, like, any other discussion, I'll make the call. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Records show three to two, proceed.
We'll see you on Tuesday.
Tuesday. I'll send you a meeting invite.
Tuesday at two o'clock.
Tuesday at two o'clock, I will.
Two o'clock.
So I said two o'clock, I got it.
And we're gonna do roadway.
Yes, yes, ma'am, yes, sir.
Thank you.
We need to go back to the one B, please.
I'm sorry?
Go back to one B.
One B.
What about public comment?
We just skipped right by that, didn't we? Resolution. I'm, I'm sorry, we'll go back to one B, uh, as a requirement that after we have the, uh.
Swearing in.
Swearing in, we need a election of officers. I would make a motion that Flavia be reappointed as chairperson for the next year.
I'll second.
Any other discussion?
Yes, I'm, I nominate Doug Banks as chairman.
I'll second.
Okay, we have two on the deal. How do we go proceed with that?
You can, any, any more nominations? I assume it's called, no more nominations.
Any more nominations? Hearing none, closed, so, uh, all in favor of Flavia being chairperson for next year, say aye.
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 It's the end of the deal, okay.
All opposed?
All opposed?
Aye.
Make it official, okay, thank you. Vice Chair?
I'll, I'll make a motion that Ed Tinkle for vice chair.
I'll second that motion.
Yeah, I make a motion to Carol Patko as the vice chair.
Is there a second? You made the motion, you go second.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, for, for the record.
For, 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 for the record, then, are there any other, uh, appointments? All in favor of Ed Tinkle for vice chair, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Going on. Appointed secret.
Opposed.
Opposed, I'm sorry.
Aye.
Forget about that. Appointed, what is this, Assistant Secretary, Assistant Secretary, everybody else is just appointed.
Yeah, I did a motion to appoint all other board members as Assistant Secretaries.
Motion, I make a motion to appoint all other board members as Assistant Secretary.
Can you second?
Is there a second, please?
I'll second, I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 We have treasurer, yeah, who is Stephen Blum, and then I have Assistant Treasurer.
Okay, for, for treasurer, the, for treasurer, Stephen Blum is to be appointed as treasurer. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 I vote. And Assistant Treasurer, who's that?
Laura Lurie.
Laura, Laura Lurie?
Second.
You got that real quick. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
One final motion, Chelsea also needs to be appointed as Assistant Secretary so she can sign documents.
Chelsea needs to be assigned as Assistant Secretary?
So, you know, have someone make a motion.
Second for that, yes.
Motion to make Chelsea as Assistant Secretary, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
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 Jeez, thank you.
Thank you.
That's swiftly, good job.
Thank you all.
I'm sorry, uh, good God, 39 minutes later, we're in the public comment, I'm sorry. Do we have people on?
I have one, I have one public comment, it's Ed Hedges regarding item 11A. Yep, which is the assessment methodology that we just discussed.
Yeah, but his, yours regarding roadway, though, isn't it?
Yeah, will there be a ability to talk next Tuesday?
Yeah, absolutely. So if you want to table yours till next Tuesday at two o'clock, it might make more sense.
What were you, what were you gonna talk about?
The roadway.
Roadway.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Does that, does that work for you?
You'll be here Tuesday, see you Tuesday, Ed.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any others? Anybody online?
Where's Rod?
He must be out of country.
Rod, no, Rod, Rod's, Rod's doing, Rod's doing landscaping, I saw him when I left. Local achievement recognitions, do we have anything?
This is also the opportunity for the board to call out any of your subcommittees or committees for anything that they've done over, over and beyond, or any residents or businesses, et cetera. But I do not have any right now.
Uh, I wasn't there, but, uh, successful event on Saturday.
Movie night.
Movie night.
Eighty, eighty-plus people showed up.
Good, 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 good.
I just wanna say, we're having a lot of great feedback regarding the farmer's market.
Yeah, yeah, there's been some good articles about that.
Okay, I will have one that I'll throw out. The Pelican Reserve Veterans Group puts on a heck of a Veterans Day Gala, for lack of a better word, at the amphitheater. The veterans speak, and they're recognized for their service, and they play the anthems of all the five service branches, and it's quite an excellent.
That was a big picture, that was a big turnout.
And I said, oh, that's small, I mean, we'd get a couple hundred people to come to that. It might be a good idea to consider that over here.
I, I'd love expanding that, you know, into, have Gateway, publicize it on the Gateway side, if you guys are open to it.
It's open to the public, yeah.
Yeah, but we don't, I don't think we really publicize it that much on this side. And you guys, it's well-established, it's well-attended. Instead, instead of us trying to do something over here, be a great way to incorporate, you know.
Well, every year, I take the pictures and send them.
Yeah, yeah.
The staff just.
And they'll just have 500 flags out in front of Pelican Reserve.
Eight thousand.
Eight thousand?
Eight thousand, jeez. All the roads, and all by volunteers again. They buy them and they put them up and they take them down three days later.
Yeah, I mean, I almost think there's, you know, we've talked about, um, trying to incorporate more things for seniors over here on the Gateway side, because we do have a, a pretty large population. Would be really great if on the Pelican side, if there are ways we can incorporate some senior activities for Gateway over, even if, you know, if there's.
Well, I, I agree with you, and the interesting part is, how many kids are there? The grandparents bringing their kids to see this open demonstration of patriotism.
Well, I, I was over there earlier this week for a, a meeting, and I saw the one thing that you, that you have that is advantageous over what we've got. You've got the unity of the entire community under a master association. We don't have that. We have 53 separate associations. We don't have a common meeting place. That, I was with Carol Monday, and that, that meeting center over there, which they had the old, what do you call it, WCI building, which is now the Brokey Center. Brokey Center, that's beautiful, but we don't have anything like that. Nothing to attract people, and hopefully, maybe with the new building, that that will offer that opportunity.
Well, and even if there's.
We just don't get that togetherness that you, you guys get over there.
And even from an event fund perspective, we should allocate dollars to the event planner over on the Pelican side for veterans, you know, for that veteran event, and it, it would, a Pelican Gateway event, but it'll be hosted at, at Pelican. So, I mean, there's ways that we can help offset some of that.
Depending on how Rule Six comes out, I don't know whether it'd be welcome, but, you know.
Let's put it this way, I got in and out, and I'm still alive.
That's only because he didn't know he was coming.
Well, if he had, in and out.
We'd have prioritized he was coming, we'd have had a meeting.
Anyway, that, that's, that's a great event, thanks for calling that out, Bob.
Moving right along, Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee member appointments, I believe we have two?
Yes. So we just need your approval to appoint them to Pratt.
Okay, how do you want to handle that? One at a time, or both of them at the same time?
I'll make a motion to accept both nominees.
Both nominees?
Second. I'll second.
Ms. Collins and Ken Frieden, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Great, I vote, welcome on board, Ken.
And I'll make a motion to approve item 8A and B.
I'll second that.
I would like to pull, I would like to pull item 8A, just for a clarification, just.
Okay, well, let's do them in the. Okay, well, let's do them in the middle.
8B, let's do them in the order, you would do 8B first, second to approve.
Well, which one are you pulling?
A.
He wants to pull A.
Okay, well, it doesn't matter. Let's just go ahead and walk through A, and then we'll just approve them in a bit. We'll just go, what's the item? You had to pull an A, and then we'll just approve them by one.
Yeah, I wanted to pull A, so let's just go ahead and get B out of the way. Motion to approve 8B, the minutes of October 17th, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 No, I made the motion. September 19th, Carol, you want to go first?
Yeah, I just wanted to express that I was sorely disappointed in these minutes. A lot of people spoke, and they spoke very well. And if you're, if you're not going to ask them for copies of their remarks and include it in the minutes, then this was a public hearing. And basically, we have no idea what these people said.
Yeah, the communication or the system, that, what do you call it, the audio system in that room, for that millions of dollars they paid for that building's a piece of crap.
But Ed, for a public hearing, you could ask them for copies of their comments ahead of time and include them in the minutes.
You mean if they had a report?
Well, you could still do it if any of them want to submit it.
If I may, if I recall correctly, Carol handed them, and I think I had them, and handed them to Chelsea or Laura, so they should be, they can be part of the record if the board wants to.
Yeah, no, it's part of the record, it's just not incorporated as part of the minutes. If you want verbatim minutes, we can try to get verbatim minutes, but I will, I will let you know that the YouTube video is always online, although the audio was horrendous. The YouTube video is there.
And also the written comments that you have, if the board wants to, they can attach them to these minutes.
Yes.
Okay, I would like to move to attach any written copies-
Comments that were submitted.
Comments that were submitted to become part of these minutes and part of the record.
I'll second that.
And I would like to further say, let's get the verbatims, as good as they are.
Yeah, I would go along with that. I have no problem. Do we need, Tony, do we need a motion and a second of that?
Yes.
Okay, is there a-
I'll make the motion.
I make the motion.
I made the second.
All in favor? We were seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The attachment?
And the verbatim.
Do we have the ability to do the verbatim?
Oh, yeah.
We will ask for Infomark to do the best that they can with what they can hear.
They do a pretty good job with it.
Only thing I would like to do is, following up on what Mr. Senior said at the last meeting, is have Doug clarify on items 110, 111, or line items 110, 111, and 112. Mr. Banks made a motion with, to proceed with the district and staff to immediately move forward with the actions to follow Chapter 170 as recommended by Maggie Mooney. This includes following all recommendations by Mooney and district engineers and experts. Like to have that clarified to include 170, 190, and all chapters associated with and applicable to the rule.
Yeah.
If you'll make that, page 15, I want that copied.
Lines 110.
It's line 110, Bob. If, Bob, if Doug would make that clarification, because 170 is-
I think I even mentioned it.
Yeah, I don't think it came out correctly on this.
Yeah, I guess the question is that if the YouTube video supports that, or if I recall, I think I may have even said something about 170, 190, and all those.
Well, then what he could do is rescind the motion and take the-
They can't rescind it. The meeting's already-
We'll have another motion.
No, and so, no, what I would suggest then is if the board then provide, you know, have a motion to clarify the direction that was part of, once we get the more verbatim minutes.
So then, would it be appropriate then that we hold the approval of the minutes of the September?
Yeah, you ask for the verbatim.
Oh, absolutely, because you're going to get the verbatim.
Okay, so, let's do that.
And at that point in time, the board can say, further direction is to clarify the-
So we're making the motion to-
We're going to table.
Hold off, table the minutes of the September 19th public hearing until we get these items to-
And in all events, when they come back to you, I would suggest that any documents that would be part of the record be included with that minutes package for the board video.
So how do we get the word out to what you said, Bill?
No, anybody who provided written comments at the time of the public hearing is what we will provide.
So that's what we'll include.
Carol had a whole packet, so we'll make sure that gets scanned and attached.
And that'll be attached with the verbatim.
So if anybody outside that's not here today or not listening had documents that they read from, are those appropriate to have those added to this?
If they did not make them part of the record at that time, no.
No.
So it was ollie, ollie, all-in, or you're not?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, you were either there, you weren't.
You're either there or you weren't, okay. Okay, moving on, so-
Well, however, for future down the road, I'm sure this board will have other public hearings. I think we should include the written as well as the spoken.
Well, I think, yeah, and along with that, same one.
And they can just provide it at the time that they make their comments.
I think we need to visit the site before we go next time to know that it's amenable to what we're trying to do, because the audio in there was horrible.
Well, the site was fine. I don't need to pick up the audio one way or the other.
We didn't test, we didn't test the audio when we went in.
But the site was good.
Yeah, I see where the audio was horrible.
Well, there was also, I think, some limitations on what pieces of the audio we could use as well. Yeah, because I think we had talked to, wasn't it?
Because after that, the initial vote, it got real hectic as far as people moving in and all that.
What I would suggest then, as a matter of policy, whenever anybody comes to the board and speaks and has a document they read from, you may want to ask, do you want to make that part of the record? And if they say yes, then you say, hand it over to Laura or Chelsea.
On the way, yeah.
Yeah, so there's no question or any doubt.
Okay.
This is a matter of routine, so that way, it becomes routine. So you don't have to sit there and have it as an extra in your action.
Okay, any other on 8?
No.
Consent agenda item, FPL Agreement for Irrigation Force Main Redundancy Project, that was consented item. Any motion to approve that? Anybody got any questions on that or anything?
I'll second Bob's motion.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. District engineer, who's on? Steve?
Steven is.
Hey, good afternoon, everyone. Steven Agassi, Tetra Tech District Engineer. Can you all hear me okay today?
Yeah.
All right, first up is the task authorization update. Irrigation Pump Station Generator, we're getting closer to start of work. We're still waiting for, to get a little closer. The generator's supposed to be delivered in March. There's going to be a little bit of site work before that. Irrigation Force Main Improvement Project, we've updated plans per staff comments and delivered those. The next step is just to wait for funding through HMGP. The Lower Hawthorne Well, the site is starting to dry out, so the contractors are able to recommence work and hopefully get that wrapped up shortly. The Gateway Utility Storage Building, the building permit is in review with Lee County right now, and we're waiting on one more reviewer to sign off. Fingers crossed we'll have that, and the contractor can get to work. Eric should be there, so he can give you an update on his projects a little later. Phase 2, Year 2 Lake Bank Restoration, this is Lake 127 and 130. We had a pre-construction meeting with Met Tower, and they are in the process of scheduling their surveyor to go out and stake the LME. We have told the contractor and notified the residents that we will be removing the trees within the LME. So that notice has gone out, and we're waiting for Met Tower to stake the boundary of the LME to identify those trees, and then process a change order to remove those trees.
How are you handling, Steve? Steve, we have a set of plans that are out and have been on the street for about a year. My phone's rang off the hook the last couple of days. We had told those people and showed on the plans the trees were to be saved, and now what we're doing is a reversal. How are we handling that?
One by one.
So, I believe the board direction was to remove all the trees within the LME. I believe Chelsea took that to, maybe even the board recommended this also, to apply that to all existing projects, so... Because this one hadn't started yet, that, that rule was applied to these two lakes.
Well, I just wanted to make sure, because I've got people calling up and says, hey, I was told, and I had a set of plans and drawings to show the tree's supposed to be saved, and now it's not. What's going on? And-
Send them our way. I know Daniel's already met on site with a handful of residents on one of those ponds.
Okay. Go ahead, Steve.
All righty, FY24 Lakes, these are the four lakes that were bid last year. MRI is to start in January. We have a pre-construction meeting that we'll have next month to get them geared up. And tree removal will also be required for those lakes, so... I believe the notices went out for those residents. We need to work with MRI to get a change order process to get those trees removed.
Steven.
FY, go ahead, Chelsea.
Pelican, you'll notice your ponds are higher. Gateway Greens, you'll notice your ponds are lower. We have lowered, opened the weirs 50% to help with the construction process to move along.
To accelerate it?
Yes.
Have we got a level at which we're going to tell the contractors he can move in?
We're going to let him make that call, but we opened them a couple days ago, and so they're planning on starting sometime after Turkey Day, so we're going to let Met Tower make that call.
Okay, because the water level obviously is different from the ponds that are up there at the north end versus the south end.
Yeah.
Big difference, okay.
Thanks, Steven.
FY25 Lake Bank Design, we have three letter recommendations on the agenda, so those will be coming up. Skipping down to FGUA, they successfully tied in the pipes, and they have, well, not tied into our system, but they've constructed the pipes, they've been pressure tested and flushed. The next steps are for them to disinfect them and complete some additional piping at the actual meter assembly. So right now, we're kind of on hold on Tetra Tech's side of things while the contractor continues their work, but everything's going pretty smoothly right now. Lake 109 Golf Course, that work is essentially done. We had our walkthrough last week. It looks good. We're just waiting for Aspelt Survey to come through. CCTV Sewer, we are wrapping up GIS on that one, and that will be used for the bid documents. Once that's done, we'll roll right into the CCTV for Storm Sewer. And then that will move forward as well, as far as the GIS is concerned. Engineers Report for Assessment Methodology, we talked about that already. I guess next Tuesday's the workshop. I kind of caught the end of that.
Yes, send you an invite.
Okay, all righty, thank you. Development Updates, Arborwood Phase 3, the last thing on there to close that one out is Stormwater. Waiting on Lennar to wrap up our punch list. Daniels Parkway Apartments, we're waiting on updated plans to review and approve. St. Eluse, we met kind of at the beginning of summer, and we agreed to wait until the dry season to make those last remediation efforts on the lake bank. So we're getting kind of close, so where they can complete that work.
Steven, I'm getting questions from the two association property management groups over there of when is Lennar going to come back and do that pond bank?
Yep. Yeah, we're waiting, yeah, we're getting closer. I think-
It's going down. Are we, who's, who's basically letting them know that the water is down and you're on the clock?
We'll be monitoring it with staff, and, yeah, we'll give them updates and let them know, like, hey, guys, it's time to come out and do your work. The water levels are low. Now's a good time, so... You know, I'm estimating probably sometime in, you know, depending on the water levels, really. So I don't want to say when it could be, but, you know, as soon as waters are low enough, they'll, they'll be on notice.
Okay.
Garrett FM, that has been approved, so we're just waiting for construction to start. And I think Chelsea just signed an FDAP permit, so we may see construction start on that sooner than later.
An issue on that Garrett deal came up. I don't know how I got involved in this, but apparently, they have a pond over there that, this is that Alton, correct?
Yes.
They got a pond, this is the one that's all being torn down in the new deal. Apparently, they've got a pond over there that's got numerous, numerous trees in the LME. How's that being addressed? I don't want this to be six months, eight months, 12 months from now, being World War III. How do we let that guy know that's bought that, that's doing that property, that he's got to get rid of a lot of trees?
So, we've looked at their landscaping plans, which show, you know, what the final project is supposed to look like, and we, we made sure that no trees were to be an impedance in the LME for maintenance efforts, so... Think that it's been addressed, but I think you're talking about some of the existing, maybe some of the trees that might be outside of their property boundary. Is that what you're saying, Ed?
About the trees that's in their property within the LME that-
Twenty foot up.
Yeah, there's a bunch of them. I mean, a bunch of them.
My under-
Get a sticker shock when they find out that all those trees have to come out.
Based on their landscaping plans, they are-
The builder is aware of that.
Yeah, Steven, maybe you want to look at the demolition plans, they had a construction plan and demolition plan.
We'll take a look.
If I'm not mistaken. And see-
Do it now. Yeah, do it now.
If I recall correctly, you write the construction plans, and I think we were all careful to make sure that the trees were in the LME were, not that many, correct, if I'm not mistaken?
Yeah, we had, we went back and forth several times to remove the trees in the LME, so... I think it's been taken care of, but we can take a second look at that, because I'm looking at the aerial right now, and I see what you're talking about, especially the southeast corner. It looks, some of the trees might be outside of their property, which they may not intend to touch.
Let's, let's take a look at that, and we can follow that up.
I just don't want that to be an argument that comes back two years from now, and it's World War III. Let's get it done right now, because they, they got to understand it's in the LME, and they need to be gone.
Yep.
Anything else, Steve?
That's it for me.
I have one question related to the CCTV. Who is the repository? I'm really not, Pelicans at it, so I'm... But I've got a lot of CD footage when we cleaned all of our pipes, when we inspected and cleaned them. And I don't know that, where you got them?
Sanitary store, Bob.
Oh, you're asking, I thought you said you have them.
I, I think I do, unless I've given them over here.
Well, I wouldn't have, if you have them, I need them.
Sanitarist-
Okay, that's what I wanted to do.
Bob, sanitary store.
Not sanitary, only store.
Store, okay.
If anything that you find that's actually company-
Because all the sanitary city works, you can't get that.
Oh, good point.
Other than New Pelican, which is all, okay, then I will make sure that you get the... I know Morris Riley had copies, and I gave copies to former district managers, but I don't have any confidence to locate them if we need them.
Anybody else have any questions for?
Eric is here to touch on his two projects.
Okay, so we're jumping, we're jumping to-
No, 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 as part of this list, as part of the engineers' update.
Sorry about that. Eric?
Good evening. For the record, Eric Five with Tetra Tech. I'll start with the Gateway Commons and Administration Building Project, since that's on the agenda today. We've got two items, including a word of the construction contract to the lowest bidder, as well as a change order to add Construction Administration Services to our task authorization, so...
So are we jumping down to 11?
No, no, he's just giving you-
I'm just giving you a summary where we're at with the project.
They were going to come back, okay.
And then the other project I have on the list is the Public Works Storage Building. That ran into some issues with permitting, so it is stalled right now. We recently withdrew our-
So what was that again?
It's stalled at the moment.
What?
Permitting issue.
Okay, okay.
For what project? The project is the Public Works Storage Building. It was to be located on the vacant piece of land east of the soccer fields. And due to the flooding, there were some concerns with the South Florida Water Management District that we need to resolve before we can move forward with the permitting effort. So we did go through one round of RAIs with the district, as well as one round with the Lee County for the LDO. And so, we will be working on some of the LDO comments, but pending resolution of the district concerns, we are not-
So I want to, I want to add something I want to bring to your attention, so Doug and I, you actually, you and I met and discussed this, and how we might, this might come to a moot point. We talked about potentially with this site, or if there was some way to partner with the county for any additional space back here in the back in their facility. Actually had a meeting with them, and they may be open to letting us put a building, do like an amendment to our, in our local agreement, and putting the Public Works Storage Building that they've already designed, put it back here.
On the wastewater site?
Uh huh, right behind us.
So we lease a portion of it, basically?
Basically, and so I'm waiting on them to kind of unofficially approve it, so then come to you all and ask for your-
So we would relocate?
Yes, and then we wouldn't, we wouldn't have to worry about that permitting concerns back then.
So do we, should we put this project on hold, or, because I don't want to, I don't want to spend any additional dollars?
No, we're not spending any additional money back in the back. We put that on hold, and hopefully, the county and the district can come to terms, and we can shift gears, and-
Okay, I just want to make sure we're not spending any additional dollars.
Correct, yeah.
If there's some ongoing due diligence, it doesn't cost anything, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, no.
But anything that costs us money-
Don't waste any more money.
But part, part of that was, we still had a concern about the parking, and so, again, if the county is open to that, we'll come back to you with alternative solution with keeping some additional parking in the back, and then shifting the building here, but that, this all came up in the last week. Again, it stemmed from our meeting. It was a great, great point, so I will come back to you with more information.
And would there be parking in the back here also? Besides additional parking up there, or?
We would probably just keep it to the building footprint. That way, we don't-
Our footprint.
Our building footprint, and continue to use this as our main, main site.
And then we'll, what we'll do is, so the plan we were talking about was-
So people would have to, if somebody worked over there, or had to go there for, an employee had to go, they'd have to park over here and then walk back?
No, we would be able to drive. We would be able to drive back there.
Okay.
But it would be employee, you're talking about just employee parking?
Right.
Yeah, yeah, there would, the public consideration will have to come back.
The building would be there, but the parking for our employees would be here.
Yes.
Correct.
But they wouldn't be working out of that building. It would be, it's for storage up there and things, or they would keep, like, some equipment in there. It's normally you working out of that building.
It's storage.
Yes.
And the whole point of the conversation was-
They still have to get back there.
Yeah, they'd be able to drive there.
Load and unload, and, you know.
Yep, they'd be able to drive there.
The part, the point of the conversation was, we ran into challenges in the back area. And so as Chelsea and I were just kind of-
I think it's called water.
As Chelsea and I were just looking at this footprint, I said, you know, we've tried several times, you know, to make changes to this building, or whatever, and there were constraints. And so, we said, well, why don't we go talk to see if there's any, any considerations to expand this footprint of this area, so we can keep everything here, which would be a little bit more efficient, and so, good, good due diligence on Chelsea's part to at least keep that ball rolling, so.
You lit the light bulb, so.
They have no place to go.
No, we don't.
Otherwise.
Yeah, so-
That's good news.
And the county, you know, they had, they sent us their, you know, future plant expansion. We said, okay, you know, we'll work with whatever they can give us, so hopefully, we'll be able to come with some good news to you in the coming months.
That'd be awesome.
So.
Anything else, Eric?
That's it for me.
You'll be back in a minute.
Yep.
Okay, no, I think we're going to go back to now 11B, and C, and D, and all three of those are, Steven?
That's me.
Take them one at a time?
Take them one at a time.
All right, so first up is, I don't know if I get to talk here, or if you guys got it, but I guess let me know if you need me.
I think the bottom line on this one is, is that the recommendation is, is that the bids came in way over the engineer's estimate, and the recommendation is to rebid. Anybody have any questions on that recommendation?
Yeah, why are the numbers so much higher, Steven?
Um, well, these two bidders have never bid on this, well, I think Landshore has a long time ago, but our typical bidders didn't bid on these two lakes, so I think we would have seen some lower numbers had our usual vendors bid on this, but for various reasons, they probably didn't, so...
But I, both of these bidders bid on C and D.
Yes, but this one was let first, so-
So they've done this kind of work before, and they bid on, I don't know if it was C or D, or one on one and one on the other, but-
They did, that is correct. This one was let first, so they might have had a chance to see their numbers, you know, publicly, after this bid was open, and then be able to sharpen their pencils for the next two. That's probably what happened.
Was there anything that's on these, either one of these two projects, which are both down, I'm taking it Daniels Preserve, that, anything that jumped out that, let's say, spooked these two bidders to, because I know we had some issues with Daniels Preserve before, I just want to make sure that any bad vibes didn't get out, and these guys were both scared over that, specifically the issue with the LME clearing. That didn't have anything to do with this at all?
Um, on the past, or on vendors that did not bid, I had heard that they were hesitant to bid because of the clear cutting of the LME. But these two bidder, I mean, these two lakes are probably the easier of the six to do. That's another reason why I think we should rebid it. I'm confident, I'm fairly confident we'll get better numbers if we rebid this.
Is there an opportunity to get other bidders also?
By rebidding?
Right, well, yeah, so I mean, if, if, if we know that they'd say, hey, I'll rebid it if you rebid it, or I'll bid it if you rebid it. But have we heard that or is it just speculation?
We're, we're rebidding because the bids are too high.
So can I answer just a quick question? I know we're going through these individually, but do we feel like all three bids were higher than expected?
No.
No?
No, one was below our estimate and one was above our estimate. And this one was way above it, so the, the other two, one was high, one was low.
I move to reject, uh, these two bids and rebid it.
I'll second.
Seventy-five and eighty-one, motion by Carol to, uh, reject the bids and rebid, uh, second by Flavia. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, thank you. Uh, go to.
One, before you move on, uh, we will try to turn this around and get it out next week.
Okay, great. Uh, let's go to eleven C, which is, uh, our friendly deal at ninety-four and one oh nine. Those look like they came in, uh, pretty good, pretty reasonable, a little bit over the bid, but, uh, any, uh, any issues there, Steve? Uh, recommendations to go with the low bidder?
That's correct, we're recommending going with the low bidder on this.
I checked this, I didn't have any questions other than the, the issues that we've already talked about. It's obviously still existing.
This is ninety-four.
I'll make the motion, I'll make the motion to award the contract to Landshore Enterprises recommended by the district engineer.
Thank you, sir, second.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
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 Question, question first, sorry.
The Landshore, uh, bid was one point six million, correct?
Yes.
Go to the next page.
And the engineering assessment was one point four five.
Yeah, I think it was like eleven percent was off over our estimate, as I recall.
Correct.
Not worth trying to rebid and get it lower?
Uh, eleven percent's in the margin of error as far as I'm concerned.
Well, I like the.
I just don't, I don't want it to go, I don't want it to go higher.
You have a hundred, almost a hundred and fifty thousand in contingency.
Hundred forty-seven in contingency.
Well, I'm kind of leaning towards Bob here. If we're going to rebid the first one, what, is there any advantage to rebidding the second one? I know we're within a margin of error, but.
Yeah, we're looking at three million, two hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars worth of Landshore contract for one year.
I, I don't, I don't have a problem with the deal with the rebidding, but I have the problem of the, the results of the rebidding.
I know it's a risk, it's a risk.
That's what scares me.
Well, I'm, I'm okay with accepting that it was under with the, the other two, which was ninety-four, one oh nine.
I mean, if we're sharpening pencils.
So your, your recommendation, Stephen, is, is that, that the bid of, uh, uh, Landover, Landshore is within the reasonable, reasonable limit that that, you, you're a one point five seven, he's a point six one.
Yep, I, I also think there's some cost-saving opportunities here, like Chelsea mentioned. There's a lot of contingency on here that I don't foresee us using. We know we're going to have a small change order on, uh, one oh nine for that small area by the wing wall at the weir. But that'll be far less than a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. Also, they probably won't need to de-water on Lake One Oh Nine because we'll be able to use the weirs and open that up. So that's another fifty-eight thousand dollars. So I think there's an opportunity to do some cost-saving on, on this contract.
Okay, so we have a motion to, to approve, uh, and a second, is that correct?
Yes.
Flavia's second.
Flavia moved, Carol second.
For ninety-four and one oh nine.
For ninety-four and one oh nine, so.
So just one more time, so Steve, what you're saying is you think there is about, what, did I hear two hundred, maybe two, two fifty of potential saves there?
Potentially around a hu, I would say a hundred and forty-seven thousand. There, there's going to be a change order for sure on one oh nine to, to add some fill. Um, as we discussed earlier, where the property lines are, you know, where they should be. But I would say between a hundred and a hundred and forty thousand dollars of cost savings.
And Stephen, that's within the SRF, uh, budget that we applied for?
Yes, the total of all these is within our budget.
And to Stephen's point, there's fifty-eight thousand dollars worth of de-watering needed. I can tell you on Lake One Oh Nine that weir is fifty percent open right now, so the waters.
I think it's forty-eight.
Oh. Uh, okay.
But the conting, the contingencies and, and things that we don't think where you will actually put us, but sort of almost where we thought the bid estimate was going to be.
Okay, so.
I don't, especially if he's going to go out money, yeah. We're redoing seventy-five, eighty-one. I'm not going to lose by redoing ninety-four and one oh nine. I'm okay with ninety-eight, ninety-nine, but I would like to try and get them a little lower.
My, my, I understand where you're going. My, my fear is to go in the other direction. That's my fear, because he's, he's sitting there with a hundred, almost a hundred and seventy thousand dollar that he left on the table. Last thing is to lose that.
Wow, I would imagine.
Hey, guys, I think if, if we're going to go through the effort of rebidding one, I mean, I don't want to throw a wrench in this, but it might not hurt to rebid it, you know?
Say it again?
If we're already going to rebid one of these, one that we just, uh, voted on, you know? Maybe I'm speaking for staff, but maybe we could rebid this one also.
Yeah, that's, that's the point, I mean.
Well, yeah, the, well, the issue is, is that if we're going to do it, we want to turn it around real quickly because we're sitting here and dropping the water level down for the hell of it. Uh, we want to be able to get in, so is there a, Flavia, do you want to reconsider that?
Yes, I'll, I'll, I'll remove my motion.
In a second.
I will too.
So, so, uh, so.
Rebid ninety-four and one oh nine also.
Tony, Tony, hold on.
The board needs to articulate a reason if the board is going to need to reject all bids and rebid. Uh, and so the basis for rejection is that the bids are too high?
Yeah.
Bids are too high, yes.
Two of the bids. Well, I'm on one topic right now.
Ninety-four and one oh eight exceeds, uh, our initial estimate and.
Right now, right, right now we're on eleven C, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Correct.
No.
So this actually only be as to eleven C.
Yeah.
As to those two lakes, ninety-four and one oh nine.
Correct.
So it's a motion to reject all bids as being too high and to rebid.
So somebody made that move.
Basically the same, repeat, repeat of what we did the one before. So we have a motion made by Bob, is there a second?
And I'll second.
Doug will second it, all in favor, say aye.
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 And Stephen, you support that determination to reject, that the bids are too high?
He said it.
Steve did that, yeah. Steve said, Steve came back and he said, I don't want to throw a monkey wrench into this, but I could, I could, I could say rebid those. Okay, no.
Eleven D.
Moving, moving right on, we're, we're batting zero, zero right now.
I'll make a, we accept.
Eleven D, we've got ninety-eight.
I'll second that.
Ninety-eight and ninety-nine, uh.
And that comes in at a hundred and one million twenty-seven thousand, which was below the.
Below the engineer's estimate. Any, any discussions on that? Motion made by Bob, was that second by Carol?
Yes.
Yeah, Flavia, any question?
No.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, none.
So this next item, um, I did speak with Danny and Stephen, can you just confirm that Tetra Tech is willing to not do a lump sum, but instead of not to exceed?
Yeah, this gets a little bit complicated. If, if, if everybody's looked at it, we have the Construction Management Services by Tetra Tech for six ponds that we've now reduced to two.
Four.
Uh, and to two.
We only, oh, reduced to.
Yeah, reduced to two, reduced by four. And so we have a lump sum contract, so the issue is, is that either we change the lump sum or we have them, uh, reduce the, the, the dollar value back to the actual services necessary for two ponds, not six. And so.
Then we bring, the other four, we'll bring four, once we get.
Yeah, we'll bring those back, so. Where'd she go? She said something about, she talked to Danny.
Yeah, she, I, I was listening in on the conversation. She did talk to Danny and this original task authorization was for a lump sum and we discussed changing it, either changing it to be a lump sum for the lakes that we're actually going to do or changing the dollar amount to a not to exceed, which will allow them to progress bill as the lakes are done.
I'd go either way, just the big thing is, is that we can't have a lump sum contract for a hundred and some thousand dollars for six ponds and we're only doing two.
Well, here's a question.
So why don't we ask them to bring it back on Tuesday?
What, what about this?
That's kind of where I'm thinking.
When, uh, when would the first, when would action or activity need to take place on this? When would work start for this?
Steve, if we issued the notice to proceed, or Chelsea, we issued the notice, we can get names of sugar. Uh, we issued a notice to proceed, uh, when on the two that we have, uh, done, thank you. Uh, how soon will this be? Can we wait to have Stephen or Danny give us a new contract for next Tuesday?
You can contingent upon us receiving that.
And, and, well, why was it even getting is, can we just table this?
Until Tuesday.
Well, I was going to say until the other two, or that, is that too lengthy, to the other two bids, to we rebid?
Well, if you rebid them and you give them a, what, thirty day or two weeks notice?
What, what are you considering? Because the suggestion from staff is just to change it from a lump sum to not to exceed. That way, that way we have.
Here's my point.
Time and material, I think.
We're rebidding two, uh, additional packages.
Understood.
When they come back, this work will still need to be done in accordance with those two.
So we, we have this, uh, um, we have this structure in place probably for a reason.
So why are we splitting it apart? Why don't we just table it till we get the other two bids back and then we revisit this?
Well, it's there, well, my, I, I think the reason is, is there work that has to be done.
That was, that was my question.
Yes, there is.
Okay, so we have to split them up.
For me, no, I prefer not, I mean, from record keeping, it's easier, the, the simplest solution, change it from lump sum to not to exceed. Then they can work on them as the lakes are.
And so all they're going to do is give us a not to exceed number, which is for those.
And then we can just expand that number with the other two.
No, that's the total for all six. They just, that's, I have a TA open from.
Oh, they're all six, even though they haven't all been awarded yet?
Correct.
Okay, all right, that's fine, yeah.
We're just requesting that it be changed from lump sum to not to exceed.
Everybody agree with that?
Okay, yeah, I'm fine with that, okay.
Not, not to exceed, time and materials, and then that way as you award them, we're, we're.
Got you.
They can just keep going, you don't need to.
One accounting cap.
Theoretically, we get back to the same number when we're done with all six.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
And we won't do anything to inhibit progress on ninety-eight, ninety-nine, which we approved.
Correct, correct. Does everybody agree to that?
Yeah.
Tony, do we need any motion on that issue?
Okay.
Yes, and just authorize, you know, signing of that revised task authorization, yes.
Yeah.
So can they have that by next Tuesday?
So just see if we can have that by next Tuesday and we just make the approval so that we don't hold anything up.
So you want to table this out until next Tuesday?
Yeah.
That's fine.
And then we have a number and we issue a.
So Stephen, you can work on, with Danny on that updated TA.
So there's one TA for all six, time and materials, not to exceed.
Yes, please, thank you.
Got it.
Okay, moving on, would it be appropriate for a five-minute break before we start F? Because it's going to.
Why do you think I just went to the restroom?
Ain't got the.
They got five-minute break.
That's up to you.
Before we start, five minutes, and then we'll start on item F.
Okay. All right.
Chelsea.
Okay.
We ready? Okay, let's reconvene. To start on item eleven F, consideration award of administration building and park, uh, project. What I'd like to see is this to be a discussion of, uh, let's take these things one at a time and separately. First, the administration building and then the park. Chelsea, do you have a presentation to make as far as the cost of where we're at on these? Or is Eric going to make a, Eric, I think probably appropriate, you go first and indicate what we have, let's divide this, first the park, then the, or first the building and then the park.
Sure. Again, for the record, Eric Five with Tetra Tech, I'm the project manager. So we collected five bids, uh, for ITB twenty-four dash eighteen AD. Similar to the last time we bid this project, we had five.
Before you begin, can the way Florida bidding projects are, can these be divided?
Yeah, because they were bid as two separate items.
There's a base bid and alternative.
Base bid and an alternative.
So they can be two different.
Okay, so we're not necessarily talking, was the base bid just the building?
Yes, it was.
Okay.
Yeah, and the other bid was the park.
Just the park?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Because recall, when we did it the first time, we had a co-mingling of costs. And we asked that it be rebid and separate the costs out totally. We did that, so now we have apples and apples.
Okay.
So we can approve this one or we could split these if we, if we wanted to.
Yeah, well, the, the, the issue is, is that the method of financing on these is different. And that's the complication, that's why I want to make sure that we understand what we got to do. Because I had a conversation with Russ and with Tony, that it may have changed just within the last twenty-four hours. But I want to make sure that we don't mix these things together and then find out that we can't do that. Let's talk about them separately. Let's go to the building first.
Okay.
Sure, that, so the, as you said, the base bid is just the admin building and associated site improvements. That was pursuant to board direction. We had five responsive bidders. I know last time we opened five bids, but two of them were non-responsive, so thankfully this time all bidders were responsive. Prices ranged from five point seven million as a low bidder to seven point six million, um, as the high bidder. The low bidder was Owens Ames Kimball, OAK. Uh, second lowest was, uh, Wright Construction Group. Third lowest was Rycon Construction. DEC Construction Group was fourth lowest and New Court Construction was the highest bidder. Um, we did check references for OAK, contacted five, only got a response from two. Both were positive and said they would recommend OAK, uh, and still use them, uh, for their projects. Typical issues during construction, uh, some delayed schedules due to, uh, supply chain issues that weren't OAK's fault. And there was some rework on one project, uh, but they, they took care of it and didn't gripe about it, and so. All fairly good feedback from the references.
So why is it so much higher than the bond estimate? And even, um, from the engineers, which I believe you came back and said it was going to be close to five million dollars?
Five-five, I'm sorry.
Five-five or something like that? Why is it so much higher, these bids?
The low bid is five-seven, so it's not so much.
Yeah, it's five-five versus five-seven.
But I understand on the five-seven, there's no contingency involved in this? Or was I, or am I mistaken?
Well, I think that's probably getting into an issue that probably is more Chelsea than our engineer. Typically, and I'd ask her to do it and she prepared and it's in the, uh, board book. This is that I'd ask, let's see, all the costs associated with this project. So she's gone through and she came up with, I think about six point six. And when you add in a fifteen percent or a two, two point five to three percent contingency, you get up close to around total, all-in cost. Soft cost, hard cost, around six point nine million is total. That's what I'm looking at, that's what our people have to pay for. And then we have to divide that cost into utility, Pelican Preserve share, Gateway share. But right now, I really don't have a problem with the fact that it's five-seven versus five-five. My bigger problem was that it was three-six, based on a totally different deal when we got to, this thing morphed into a building that's ninety-one hundred square feet. It is what it is, and that's where we're at. The issue we have now that's gotten a little clouded in the last twenty-four hours is that we have gotten at the request of some of our owners that hasn't heretofore been knowing that we have a opportunity to instead of building a building, to rent a building here in the community.
Right.
I went through, I talked to Chelsea and went through all the calculations. I think probably we ought to have this discussion before we go any further. Either put this thing to rest and get it off the table or we, we look at going on. I looked at this on twenty-year cost, thirty-year cost, and what it came down on a thirty-year cost is that each one of these costs us about ten million dollars, all in, over a thirty-year period. About ten million bucks, that's debt retirement and/or paying, uh, lease for the building and, uh, operation and maintenance cost. Apples to apples, about ten million bucks. However, when we get down to the end of the thirty-year period, in fact, at the twenty-year period, we own the building. We now have equity and at the end of the thirty-year period, we continue to have equity. So based on that, my thing is, is that it does not look like it's any opportunity for us to proceed with chasing a goose on leasing a building. We could have an owner come back, change his mind in three years, five years, seven years, and we're out in the street and we're up the creek without a paddle. That's just.
I agree.
In my opinion, that's too much exposure for a utility or an entity, public entity like us. Way too much exposure.
Okay, but Ed, let's go back. Your all-in cost was 6.9. I'm just going to round that up to seven, okay? Because it's a round number. $7 million for a brand-new building. If we go back to OAK and say, there is no way in the world we can afford that. Can you, what, what can you build for us for $5 billion, all-in cost? Can we do that?
The answer is you're going, you're basically, first thing you're going to have to do is you're going to have to go to the engineer to come up with a design, a redesign, to be able to give him a weight. We're down to, this is real, this is reality. This building's 9,100 square feet. You want it to get down, I've gone through these numbers, I've beat my head out on this issue. The only way you're going to get that number down is you're going to get rid of square footage. You're going to take a 9,100-square-foot building and make it about 7,000 square feet.
Ed.
You look at that design.
Ed, why don't you let a professional?
I'm sorry?
Why don't you let a professional decide what they can and can't do?
Well, what he's saying, it's, we can't go back to OAK and say, hey, can you do this cheaper? We have to completely redesign.
Yeah.
Rebid.
Okay.
And, and so we have to say, okay, buy 5,000. Well, 5,000 doesn't meet our needs. So.
Okay, but Doug, there are many times in life, you go out and you're, you're looking at cars and you say, ooh, I like that and I like that and I like that on it and whatever, whatever, whatever. And all of a sudden, it's twice as much as you wanted to pay. I can't afford $80,000 for a car. I only got $60,000. So you go back and you look, start looking again and say, what can I afford for $60,000?
Well, I, I, I see what you're saying.
Just because it comes in higher, doesn't mean you have to accept it.
I need a car that can fit six. I can't, I can't buy a car that fits four. It just doesn't meet my needs. So either, you know, I, I understand what you're saying. I completely understand the, the cost perspective.
I mean, there are many times when you have to say.
Can't go smaller, it feeds our purpose, might as well, there's, smaller doesn't.
Well, my, my biggest thing is when I went back and I looked with Chelsea, you know, and looking at the calculation, like, we will be paying the same amount, we just won't, we won't, we won't own anything and we won't have any equity. And, and I, we're at the mercy of the landlord.
No, 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 no.
Wait, wait, wait.
Carol's point has nothing to do with the lease. She's talking about just the building cost.
No, I'm not talking about the lease.
She wants the building cost to be cheaper. How do we get it cheaper?
Well, do we too?
The, the.
So maybe you have to go back and say, I can't afford this. What can you give me for that?
Here's, here's where I'm at that I'm, I'm concerned. Go back, December of last year, in this very room. We were told 5.5 million and I asked the question, and I didn't get any support from any of my fellow board members on this issue, that we're going down a path with no alternative, that I got overruled. And so we are where we are. I think these bids are damn-good bids. The fact that they are lumped together in this close implies that they're damn-good bids. I just think going back and trying to take and change this thing is the wrong direction.
I agree.
I did some math, I did some math. It's my number, $6,906,000, and I know Chelsea and I are going to argue over maybe $100,000, but that's not worth it. Our utility fund is going to pick up 59% of that, and we're not talking about making any change on that right now. That's what we've had, that was the deal. And that's at least the deal for the 3.6 million that we had on the bond validation. So that, we're not going to renig on that. $4,747,000, $2,430,000 in cash means we're borrowing $1,640,000. About $236,000 in O&M. Bottom line, for the 7,000 users, 7,000 users in our utility system, that works out to be about 51, 52 bucks.
A year.
A year.
Yep.
I then go to Gateway. Gateway share is 27%, which is $1,865,000. When you add in what we have to pay for principal and interest and our share of O&M, it works out to be about $30 per user. So a person who lives in Gateway and has Gateway utilities, you're looking at about, say, $80, $85 a year to not only finance, but to operate and maintain this building. Pelican share is 14%, which is $967,000. They have $521,000 in cash available right now, which means they would borrow or pay cash, either one. I did it on the basis of borrowing it. $446,000 plus their share of O&M works out to be about $29. $29 for Pelican, with the Pelican people that are on our service would be 29 plus 50, so they're about $79. These numbers tell me we're chasing a goose to do anything other than to accept the bid and proceed with this. I don't think you're going to get anything better than this. Do I like it? Not necessarily. I think that building could have been smaller. But at this point in time, we looked and examined the issue of going to this other building and over a 20-year period, a 30-year period, it, it, it's not in our best interest. We're going to be here forever. So why do we want to take and rely on somebody that, that we develop no equity? That's just stupid to me. I think that the, I think the bid is reasonable, the bid is good, the bid is fair and equitable. It's based upon what we have agreed all along. We've got to the point that it's 9,100 square feet, whether we like it or not. That's the building we've come up with. I, I just, the, the math shows, and Russ saying, Tony, can, uh, uh, opine all they want. I think the only issue that we've got and the only reason I would have that we can't award a contract tonight is that we need to have both Tony and Russ verify that we have all the i's dotted and the t's crossed relative to the bond people. Because keep in mind, our bond anticipation called for 3.6 million. This is much greater than that. So if, if we could wait till that December 5 meeting to get that deal, my thing is, is right now, is that we proceed full speed ahead as if we are going to award a contract, hopefully, within 90 days, which would be on or about February 6th, to OAK to build this building.
Okay, and I disagree with you, Ed. The, the building where they're talking about leasing the space only came up, what? Four or five days ago, at the, at the most? Okay? And there have been no negotiations with the owner of the building. You're just going off the listing sheet. What's to say the owner couldn't condo the building and sell off part, part of it to us and keep the rest for himself?
Well, I think that's what he's doing. That's what he's doing right now. We're, we're looking at.
No, he's only talking about leasing right now, but there's been no discussions.
No, he's leasing.
You're, you're.
The proposal is for 14,000 square feet.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct. But we haven't gone back to him and said, how about an option, how about a lease with an option to purchase at such and such a point, at such and such a, a price? We've not talked about that. We haven't gone back and talked to him about condo-ing it and maybe keeping some of it himself for maybe future expansion of his business and we take the rest of it. None of those discussions have been had, so.
Nor have any of the costs that we would have to have to do the improvements to make that building suitable for our needs. I, I, my personal opinion.
You can do a lot of improvements with a million dollars.
I think it's a waste of time.
A ton of improvements.
I have a question about the, the building. So when we look at between now and project completion, where are there potential opportunities for, for saves? Would it be potential material costs? Or is it, what, what would you say could possibly be perceived? And I'm not saying that it will be. But are, are there, what are the potential areas that we could see, uh, cost saves or, you know, things of that, of that nature?
Sure, well, first and foremost, as Ed was indicating, square footage is going to bring, if you bring the square footage down.
Without, without changing any design?
Without, without changing the design, there are some finishes that we could downgrade. You know, you, you do have some more premium flooring and countertop and cabinetry materials spec for the building. We could downgrade those and save some money, but you're not talking about.
I looked at all those.
Yeah.
It just isn't.
Unless there's significant, you know, reduction in concrete or, you know, steel or, so I'm, that's what I'm talking about, those types of materials that we, we don't have a crystal ball, we don't know, because material costs are, are pretty high.
And we, we discussed previously, the generator is a big dollar item. But, you know, you want this building to be able to function.
And I just want to make sure I wasn't missing anything other than just, you know, if material costs.
We also talked about the parking lot is technically bigger than it's required to be. You could lose some parking and save money on paving.
Okay.
The one, the one that we've skipped, and I still want Tony to opine. Tony, what do we, because we had a conversation the other day. I was of the opinion that we have to go back and get, get some approvals from the bond people. Are you of the opinion that right now, at this cost of about 6.9 million, we do not have to do anything out of the ordinary to get the approval of the bond people to proceed with the financing of this project?
Is there anything prohibiting us to approve this?
Yeah, anything inhibiting us.
Well, I guess it's, I, I'll rephrase it, because it's really, we had a call this morning with Pedro, Russ, myself, and Chelsea and Laura to go over possible revenue sources and how to, how to address this. And, and Pedro hadn't really been introduced to the financial aspect of the shortfall with regards to the fact that right now, the, the bond issue does have 3.6 million for the admin building. And there are other categories in there, and if I'm not mistaken, we talked about how we may not be able to, he's going to double-check whether we can shift projects within that 2023-1 or 20 bond issue to allocate more to the administration building. We didn't really have a firm answer on that today. Correct me if I'm wrong, Chelsea, that's my, my recollection. And so that's one ask, we're not.
Well, if I could.
Yeah, go ahead, yeah.
We can move money within the same category. That has been confirmed. But what he's looking into is if we can move money from a roadway category to administration.
Yes.
And just to be clear, we're, we can, we can approve this project without any additional bond funding outside of what, what's already been allocated?
Well, I'm not sure what that means, because the question is if we have, do you have the funding to pay for it? That's one question.
So.
You know, that's.
You would have to move some money within the bond around, but yes, we can.
Yeah, that's, because to Ed's point, he was saying, we may not, we have to, is there any dependency on a bond approval in order for us to approve?
You mean bondholder consent or otherwise?
Yeah, that's my point, because we got 90 days.
That's, that's what Pedro is double-checking on, to make sure, because he went back and looked while we were on the phone call, looked at the master trust indenture to see what flexibility there might be, if I'm not mistaken.
So.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Chelsea or not.
But is it possible, if we were to proceed tonight, we could, if we proceed with an approval with a contingency that Pedro determines that the, the bond movement is.
I would suggest not. My recommendation is, the bid prices are good for 90 days from the date of bid opening. Bid opening was November 6.
Yeah, we have to February 6.
So technically, arguably, under the bid, the bid numbers and proposals are good until February 4th, if my math is correct.
Well, why can't, why can't, hold on, why can't we do this? Which is, to honor what Carol said, I, I think we can do two things at the same time. We can't make a decision tonight to categorically endorse an award of contract. We don't have that ability. We don't have a clear-cut way to do that.
Why is it on the agenda?
I'm sorry?
Why is it on the agenda if we weren't in a position?
Well, no, because we need to do what we've got to do. And that is, I think there's two steps. One, we immediately go ahead and authorize, whether it's Tony, Russ, whoever, get to the bond people and verify that the financing of this can be done, however, within the 90-day period. That's issue one. Concurrently with, go with what Carol said, just to totally take this issue to the, to, to, to the end, go over to that owner, whoever it is at that building down here, and see where they are able to negotiate a price on that, either lowering their rent, will they give us a 30-year lease? I would be absolutely amazed if they would do that. But anyway, let's then come back on December 5th, and at least at that point in time, we should be far enough along to know that we are either able to go with the building and finance it without any ramifications of the bond people, or we want to jump ship and say, drop this thing, or go on to the other one.
Or, or, or I think, and, and Chelsea would need to run down the numbers that we've talked about. I think that'd be helpful for the discussion, but, or come back on December 5th with plans that could possibly find, ways to finance the building.
My, my point I'm trying to make is, guys, you gotta understand, I've done this a lot of times. That clock is ticking and it's been ticking now for almost three weeks on that 90 days. The last thing we want to do is to lose these bids.
No, I understand. And again, that's why December 5th, we come back, if we say, yes, we can, we believe that there are legally available sources of funds to utilize to fund that project at that cost.
We don't have to wait, we don't have to wait till December 5th. Can it be ready by next Tuesday? Can we get the?
I don't believe we will.
Can I run through the numbers?
Yes.
Well, the, the, the other one you've, you've got to do, I just touched on a part of it. The PP share and the Gateway share are pretty simple. The monies are pretty simple. The monies appear to be there because we've done everything in the past on that number. We're in the ballpark. The utilities were, I'm a little bit concerned. We've had the decision that we cannot spend that connection fee money, so we're short.
Well, we've had further conversation about that. The question is, because the connection fees are akin to impact fees. So you have to apply the dual rational nexus test, as they call it.
I understand that.
And that it can only be utilized to pay for facilities that are required by virtue of growth and demands on the system.
I understand all that.
Arguably, if we can say.
But Tony, the problem is, with all that, at least with what Chelsea's sharing with me, we're about 1.7 million short. Alls we need to know is that we've got a alternative to solve that 1.7 million. Because the Gateway side and the Pelican reserve side, in my opinion, based upon what she has said and what Russ has said, it looks like we're in pretty good shape. We can make this building happen. And we can make it happen at what I think to be very reasonable costs. Notwithstanding, we still chase out that other deal, see if, if something would fall to the wayside that, hey, this guy's coming back, he's going to make a, make a deal that we can't, we, we can't turn down. We give it a shot. But at the same time, don't lose time on our 90-day clock ticking. Let's continue with this other one going, such that on December 5th, we have an answer as to which, where we're going.
Yeah, and there are some.
More final numbers.
Question.
Right now.
Chelsea, I, I.
Words are flaked.
Tony, one second. I have a question, because I think either Tony, either Ed or Doug asked, can we get a answer by Tuesday and not waiting till December 5th?
I don't know.
From Pedro, I mean, I don't know.
I, I'm not, I'm not clear on what you're asking the bond counsel, because we have a set limitation based on the 2023 bond series. Unless you're asking for additional monies to be appropriated to it outside of what we've already asked for. We know that we can move money within the category.
Well, that was my question, is what's prohibiting us for, from?
So that's why, why would I'm making the decision? I don't understand why we're delaying it.
I think the issue is, the issue is, is that I'm, I'm not feeling warm and fuzzy that I've got a final number system here that shakes down, that shows all the actual costs of what we're actually going to be paying for. I think I know, I think I know, but I want to make sure that some bond counsel doesn't come back and say, no, 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 you can't do that. That's not what we agreed to.
I, I think what would be helpful, Chelsea has run down the numbers and the sources of numbers, monies, right? They have, they currently believe, without having to go double-check with bond counsel as far as the funding.
So if I can just run through the attachments and the agenda?
Well, we got the attachment, but Chelsea, these numbers aren't, aren't, aren't accurate. They don't have all the correct costs that we've talked about.
Understood, it's been updated since then. I don't have that with me, but the basic, so you can understand the funding sources, that's the key. That's what I'd like to run through.
Okay.
Okay.
Because that, that's critical to me.
That's a different, that's a different document than what's in front of us now on the screen.
I've updated this document. This document is a working, breathing, living document.
Okay, this one was current version or not?
No.
Okay.
So, but the funding sources, it has not changed. So we had original budget, looking on the admin side, if you'll follow with me. The original budget for EOPC was 3.6. The EOPC at 100% design was 5.4. The next set of numbers are expenses either incurred today or we have encumbered. Okay, so we have $486,000 in engineering. Soft, other soft costs include Tony's time, surveying, et cetera. Construction number from OAK for the building only. We have C, construction administration. I don't have the CEI number yet from Tetra Tech.
I thought that was 100,000.
I have not put, I, I don't have.
Okay, but I mean, that needs to be added.
Yes, so that needs to be added. So we've got an FPL cost of 32,000 for the transformer, that we know that will be coming. And then FFNE, which is furnitures, fixtures and equipment, which you'll notice that there's a couple items after. We, we, if we direct purchase, we can piggyback Sourcewell, other contracts that we can save money instead of paying 10% to a general contractor.
And then we don't have any contingency.
So we have no contingency.
So that's about 150,000. And then the, we're going to talk about later, we got this, a monitoring system.
That's part of FFNE.
That's in there already?
Yes.
That's in that, now 90, 90,000's in here?
Yes.
Okay.
So to Ed's point, we're, the updated number is closer to 6.9.
About 6.9.
Now, if we take that number, per the assessment methodology, you have 27% for Gateway, 14% for Pelican and 59% of utilities. Now, moving to the funding sources. At the closing of the 2023 bond series, Gateway has 977,000, Pelican had 506,000, and the enterprise fund took cash out of reserves and put in with the trustee. So they paid in advance, right? So they, that money's gone out of the enterprise fund. Moving down, please note, I did not count any carryforward from, from last year. The FY '25 budget, we anticipated this shortfall, you all anticipated this. We put in the monies of your appropriate percent to get to the 5.5 million. So in the FY '25 budget for Gateway under the general fund, there's 512,000. Pelican put in 265. Moving on to O&M, we didn't know if the building was going to be built yet, if we'd have operations and maintenance costs. So we put, based on $100,000, we had O&M costs in each fund. So it's monies available to use towards construction costs. The next line item, there are interest earnings, it's been, interest rates have been high. Steven Blum has done a hell of a job at getting us some interest earnings. The general fund made $279,000 in interest earnings, which we could apply towards this. The general fund made $279,000 in interest earnings, which we could apply towards this building. Pelican made $240,000. The enterprise fund made 238,000. Now, you can see at the very bottom, the difference, which based on Ed's and I, we looked at the numbers, adding in those numbers, we're about 60,000 short, adding in the other numbers that I haven't updated yet for the general fund. Pelican's covered. Pelican doesn't have to appropriate any more funds other than what's identified. The enterprise fund is short 1.6 million. You have two options for that, three really. The first option is a five year bank loan, which Steven Blum has already got an interest rate on, which is approximately 5%. So $250,000 a year repayment on a five year loan. Yeah, second option, what Tony was trying to allude to earlier, was potentially an interfund loan using connection fees. An interfund loan, we would borrow that 1.6 and again, we would pay ourselves back over five years. Again, we, we.
Or a number less than that, depending upon the allocation, because again, the connection fees are designed to capture the cost for expansion of services, not just.
But either way it goes, that's money our owners have to pay back and generate in revenue.
Yes, so that ultimately, you could move some money around within the administrative category of the bond to account for your shortfall for the general fund. You have, the third option for the, for enterprise fund is to take out a, a bond series and sell bonds. Don't recommend that. There's a lot of additional professional fees with bond costs. I think we could serve our taxpayers better by taking out a bond loan or an interfund.
Yeah, and, and what I think what Pedro also said, just for discussion purposes, assume for discussion, there was a short term loan, five years, whatever, that the next bond issue under the original $55 million validation, we could wrap that into that bond issue and take out that loan if we get a more favorable interest rate.
Yeah, if, if you wanted to do a longer than five year, we could. We have fu- funding available from that 1989 bond.
The water and sewer revenue bonds, yeah.
So that way.
Well, if you go with the five year bond versus 20 year bond on the utility side, then that cost of $50 is going to jump up to about $75 for the five years.
Yeah, so.
Then again, we have room, a lot of room in the water and sewer bonds, we talked about.
Yeah, oh, there's plenty, there's plenty of headway. So ultimately, when it comes to the building, you can make it happen, but you have to move some money around.
Questions?
Well, the first question I have is on the spreadsheet I'm looking at.
Yes.
Doesn't matter whether you look at Gateway, Pelican, until, because it's safe though. The bonds, 506, that's what we're already in cover.
Yes.
What's the FY budget? That's what we allocated for this?
Yes, for this fiscal year.
Okay, O and M costs 14 grand.
That's, that's, hold on, Bob, make sure we clarify this. This is where I get a little upset. This ain't telling the whole story. This is the first year. The O and M is not $100,000. The O and M in the reserve is about $450,000. When we go to the first full year of operation in 2026, you aren't going to have $100,000 of 59, 14, 27. You're going to have about $450,000 distributed. That's what I did my calculations on.
What comes out of that is what we're currently paying, right?
I'm sorry?
What we're currently paying for the rent over there and all that. There's going to be a difference.
It's, it's so minute, it's not even worth it. The issue is.
This goes up quite a bit.
The issue is, what Chelsea's showing is true. It's true for the first year. I'm not worried about the first year. I want my residents to know that the O and M of this building and the reserve on this building is going to cost more, like about 450,000 a year, not 100,000.
Well, then, if we, if we put this off till next week, I'd like to have that clarity, second, third, fourth year, so we just look at that.
That, that's what we need, but even with that.
But I'm not finished with this one. The interest earnings, where, where did that money come from?
Interest earnings from investing, from.
Investments.
Okay, but.
The bonds, the bond funds are held at the trustee account at Regions Bank. They're, they're invested and then that's the earnings on those dollars that are.
Okay, but that money right now.
It's not.
Those earnings, that is the O2 accounts earnings, right?
Yes, yes.
It's not ours.
Yeah, it's the O2 accounts earnings, it's 240,000.
So I don't know how you can count that in here because that's not our money.
It's, it's the assumption, Bob, that that money was going to be used to offset.
Wasn't assumed by Pelican, I'll tell you that.
Well, I, I.
Okay, I'm just saying.
It's, it's one of those things to pay me now or pay me later. Either we take and assume that, or we just raise the interest.
But I'm, but I'm trying to grasp and get ahead of it. What is it really going to cost us right now?
Yeah.
Uh, the other things, and I got a little bit of clarification tonight. But when we were first proposing, Gordon, I'm going back two years ago. The building was going to be 2.5 to 3 million, and then somehow it got to be 3.6. And now, since I heard that's the bond embeddedness, for lack of a better word.
No, that's the allocation in the project.
Allocation of the cost. So that's one of the 3.6, and I'm all aboard up to 3.6. I might even go to four. But now we're in a range of, you know, 600, 6 million and more. I mean, good Lord, that's a whole lot more money than I was thinking. What is, what's wrong with how we're operating today? I know it's a little uncomfortable, but we've been doing this for months and months and months with the two systems. And is the difference between where we are and how we're operating, as inefficient as it is, is that worth going after all this money?
That's a policy decision.
I know, I, I'm.
We, we.
That's, that's what I'm struggling with. So what I heard Carol say is a possible alternative, it may or may not pan out, but I'd like to explore it aggressively because I'm just not sure that I'm representing my voters, and that's all of my voters, gave them up, that they really want to get into this thing for this kind of money. Now, I, I see the equity portion, I, I see what you're saying for 30 years, but I ain't going to be here in 30 years. Let them worry about that. I'm here now.
That's why, that's how we got in this position, Bob.
Well, I understand.
People have had that very attitude 20 years ago.
Completely understand, but we're not dire, you know? When we assume the additional debt over time, it just kind of rolls. You know, you go through inflationary theories and things like that.
Well, my thing is right now, we cannot make, in my opinion, we cannot make a decision right now to award a contract to, to the bidder. But we sure as hell can initiate the process to start going that direction with that as an option and exploring the deal of that building and seeing what they come up with. Maybe they can come up with some deal and cut the cost or something to make it loo- look better. But I know at the end of 30 years, if I've got a wash and one place I have equity and the other place I don't, I sure as hell ain't going to go that route. It's ridiculous. It's, that's not a good investment of the people's money. I would like to see this done in the next, what do we, now and next Tuesday, get that done. But my question is for Tony is, can we definitively have an answer? What's his name, Pedro? From Pedro, whatever, that there is nothing standing in our, what is that, did I say it right?
Pedro Hernandez.
Is there anything standing in our way that based upon what we have said and, and understanding what Chelsea's talking about of moving the money for the utilities? Because that's where we have probably the biggest issue.
You're moving the money within, okay, we talked, we have a 2023-1 series and 2023-2 series. Gateway's the first one, Pelican period is the second. So the question is, in the 2023-1 series bonds, there's a description engineers report describing the projects with an estimated opinion of probable cost.
Because right now.
And there are various categories in there. And so, and so I guess the question is, can the district legally move money from one category, utilities, to the administration category?
We got to have the answer to that.
Is that the question?
Yeah, but let's set the expectation that we try to have that decision by next Tuesday.
I, hold, I'm.
And let's move on.
I am not even clear what you guys are asking of Pedro. Are, are you clear? Because we're not mixing utilities with, at this.
That's what I'm trying to get at, Chelsea. I'm trying to say, what, what, trying to frame the question is, do you, what do you mean by changing things in the bond issue?
What is it specifically you're asking?
No, 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 wait, wait, stop, stop. I want to know one thing, and I'm, I'm really not, I don't want to be bullshitted on this. I want to know that we go down this road with this building and this financing plan. I don't want some yahoo sitting in Washington or someplace else come back, well, you didn't get my approval on that. I want to know right now, because I'm ready to go full speed ahead with the building.
Do you want me to go call Pedro?
And, and.
If you could.
Do the interfund.
I thought this was already done, that Pedro was consensual to the deal that we don't have to do anything to get approval to do this financing as we've got a plan right here. Is that true or is that not true?
Hey, Chelsea, can I get a Pedro on the phone?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know Pedro, you know, try to call him. I don't know if he's seen this breakdown.
Unless you're.
How in the hell did we get this far and not have talked to Pedro?
We talked with him this, we had a conversation with him this morning.
Let me get on the phone to Pedro. Jesus Christ, this is not this difficult, people. The answer is, we've got a plan, we've got a financing plan. Are you going to nix it or not? If you're going to be behind us, I'm 100% ready to make a motion to proceed with the building.
Well, I guess the question.
But I don't want him coming back and sticking a knife in my back.
Pedro says, I'm not willing to spend some.
No, I, I, no, no, it's not that, Bob. It's not Pedro's, what, making the decision of what to spend. It's Pedro's decision that says we can spend it based upon what we have had approved.
That is a link that needs to be considered.
It should have been considered already.
Well, you hit me tonight that we're looking for 7 million. I'm not willing to pay 7 million dollars.
No, I guess, if I, if I may, if I may, the question, I guess, the question is, trying to still it down is, what, first of all, what is the financing plan that we're talking about asking him? That's the question. I mean, I'm not sure if we're all clear as to what is the financing plan?
I'm not.
Question to ask him. I don't know. Are you clear, Chelsea? I'm not.
Claire's not. No, I'm not.
You don't want to tell me that you've got the plan of how are we going to finance this? I just want to know that Pedro's going to approve it. It's all there is.
Pedro is not required to approve it as part of this plan. We have a set amount of money that we've taken.
Then there shouldn't be any issue.
There should not be any issue.
So from a staff's perspective, is there any issue with the funding source and our ability to, to call this to a vote?
From a staff, from a staff perspective, there's no issues.
Okay.
Tony seems like he has.
Nail on the head.
Okay, I'm not, okay, again, if the financing plan includes borrowing that total large number from the connection fees, is it, does it, Chelsea or not?
And, and I'm waiting on you to apply.
No, 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 does that include that, one, borrowing 2.57 million from?
1.7 for the interfund.
What were you indicating is bring borrow from the connection?
No, no, that's on the bar.
That's on the bar, that's. How much money?
No.
We will need 1.6 million dollars either through a five year bank loan or an interfund loan with connection fees.
Okay, and again, on the connection fee piece, to the extent that we can make a determination, an analysis as to how much of the cost of that building, how much of the size of that building for utility operations is attributable to new growth.
To what?
New growth or the demand for services.
It's, it's like.
That's how connection.
Wait, see, there's, for the 1.6, there's an alternate funding source. Either it's, we.
Bank loan?
A bank loan, or we do an interfund. One of those two options.
You hit, you hit the nail on the head. If the 1.6 on a five year loan and it has nothing to do with getting or securing Pedro's.
It's not.
Deal, then what are we talking about? We're ready to rock and roll.
Well, at least we're ready for, I think we're ready for a vote.
I got the impression, talking to you the other day, that we got to jump through the hoop and get Pedro's deal. Now I'm getting a deal that we don't have to have Pedro's deal.
Well, that, that all depended upon how the idea was.
I'm going to make it simple, Tony. I'm going to make it simple. I want a real simple legal question. The only issue I see that we got right now, only issue, is where in the hell do we come up with about 1.7 million bucks?
Yeah.
And my deal is if Chelsea is right, that we could go to the bank and get a five year loan. The only thing that does is that puts for the first five years to the bill paying customer in our utility fund, they're going to be paying the principal and interest on 1.7 million divided by five plus interest.
I agree, and, and/or maybe a different rate if we use the bond capability.
And we interfund.
Correct. So I just don't see, I just don't see that there's an issue here.
You're willing to spend 7 million, you're willing to spend 7 million, without even a.
Bob, Bob, I said here, I said, well, just wait a minute, I want to make sure, I want to make sure you understand something.
I want to make sure you're understanding mine.
We all sat here last December at 5.5 million and you approved it. You approved it.
5.5?
Yes, 5.5.
So, now we're at 7 million.
No, but.
Now we're at 7 million.
Guys, if you've got that problem, you've got a real problem. You need to learn engineering. There are hard costs and soft costs. 5.7 million versus 5.5 is a construction. You've got all the soft costs. I'm going to make a motion, I will make a motion that we proceed with the two things that we talked about earlier to have an answer next Tuesday at 2 o'clock as to we have no issues about the funding of this project using this funding analysis of borrowing 1.6, 1.7 million for the five years, which is the only thing in, only thing in doubt. That's the only thing in doubt.
No, it isn't. We got another building to look at. We got a lot of.
Can, can I, can you finish your motion? Because it's really hard to make it up. When you're making a motion and you get interrupted, then I lose it.
Yeah.
So just, just work on your motion and then if.
Go on ahead.
He made the motion in the middle of my conversation.
We go on ahead and proceed.
Order, please.
Yeah, hold on. We go on ahead.
That's what I'm asking you to do. Hold on.
We go on ahead and proceed.
Well, you don't stop, so just keep right on talking.
And then concurrently, we call the people that are selling or wanting to lease that building.
This is a motion?
And find out. Yeah, there's two parts of it. We, we have not made a decision. We have not made a decision.
I have no idea what the motion was.
Neither do I. Thank you. I kept interrupting because I wasn't allowed to speak.
My motion is to proceed.
Hey, guys, just stop for just one second. Is there something you need to say before Ed makes his motion, Bob?
Yeah, go ahead, Bob.
Go ahead. It was a question.
Go ahead.
We're now embarking upon a 7 million dollar expenditure without even looking at what, the possibility of another building.
No, we're not. I didn't say that.
That's what Ed is, Ed is saying there's two parts to his motion.
It's a two part motion.
By next Tuesday, do due diligence again with the lease to see if there's options and.
Firm up the financing plan.
Firm up the financing plan. And really, the financing plan is, we have one option, which is bank loan, which we don't need any, any outside consideration. Or if we interfund, what are our limitations or availability for the interfund options?
And to that point, there might be ability to reduce the amount of that five year loan if some of the connection fees, we can make a connection between the need for additional expansion of the staff based upon initial demand and additional space based upon growth.
So to reiterate Ed's motion, which I will second, is to direct staff to continue due diligence on the, on the other leased building, looking at lease option terms.
Whatever.
Whatever. And for us to have the funding plan, be ready by next Tuesday. And the, the piece to that is really for Pedro to.
Well, I, I don't know what Pedro needs to.
Pedro does not need.
Again.
Then we'll leave Pedro's name out.
Alls I can say is if Pedro doesn't need to be involved, heaven help somebody if Pedro comes back and nicks his.
So really, the motion is.
You want to put your head out on that limb.
The, the motion is, we're going to table, table the building a decision until Tuesday and direct staff to do continued due diligence on the lease.
On both issues.
Yeah.
That's my motion.
And I'll second that.
Any other discussion? Discussion?
No.
Call the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. No.
Another shocking vote.
Three to two.
But at least, at least my three gateway living resident brethren are going to all stand up and say they want to spend this money. So that's good. Because too many times in the past, I heard Gateway was being screwed because Pelican people supported these things.
No, no, I think the issue of the building, that, I don't, I've not heard that on the building.
Always saying that they were always spending money because they weren't on the quick plan.
Let's, let's, let's go next.
And Ed, if I may, for clarification, just, just briefly, I think the conversation with regards to my getting with Russ and Pedro was geared towards the other project and whether or not there needs to be revisions.
You mean the park project?
Yes, that's what they.
Okay, also, also I'm saying is, is I really, I don't know Pedro from, if he came down, walking in my front door. Also, I know is the so tight people, people and bond people can give you grief. I want to make sure that they are not going to stand in the way of what we talked about of a 1.6 million dollar five year loan and the rest of the stuff that we're doing on this project is ready to go.
My understanding from our conversation this morning, the answer would be, he's fine with that. That's acceptable because we also then talked about, you know, the five year, but then also when we do the next bond issue, the board does, wrapping that 1-5, taking that out. Is that correct, Chelsea? but then also when we do the next bond issue, the board does, wrapping that 1-5, taking that out. Is that correct, Chelsea?
Yes.
Yeah, so I mean, he's fine with all that.
Okay, let's go, let's, so we have a plan that they will come back, that hopefully next Tuesday at 2 o'clock, we will have a complete analysis, like Bob said, one year and then the next five years of what the cost and the ramifications of the cost of borrowing this 1.6 million and the other cost and operation and maintenance cost for the building.
And we also got, we also got item 11H coming up. There's $100,000 audio visual.
She already said that was in the cost.
It is in there. Oh, there are no other surprise costs.
Sorry, I had that same question.
So G and H needs to be tabled as well, if you're taking that stance on it.
Oh, no, no, we're now, no, we haven't even talked about G and H. They, they get, it gets a little complicated as we go down the road.
And, and again, just for clarification, the extent that I'm comfortable in applying that a portion of the connection fees can be utilized for the admin building, that would take down that number.
That just makes it easier.
Yeah, that's all I'm saying.
That makes it easier. Okay, Eric, let's go to the building, or the, let's go to the second bid, which is the park component.
And the park component is additive alternate number one. So as Chelsea was alluding to, if you don't approve the base bid, we can't approve the alternate. But the pricing that we received on that was also fairly close. Low bid was 2.5 million from OAK, all the way up to 4 million from new core construction is the high bidder. And just to make another point, we did have two repeat bidders. And on the base bid, their pricing did go up, so just wanted to point out that costs are continuing to escalate. We didn't add anything in scope to the base bid, so I just wanted to make that point. And I also wanted to take the opportunity to introduce my colleagues who I was missing introducing earlier. We have our civil engineer, Rick Belansky, and our landscape architect, Bill Pricey, here with us as well. So we have teamed with them. They're from Bowman, Homontez, a Bowman company. So, so if you have any questions for them while they're here, feel free to, to ask them as well.
One, one question, was black the wear of the day that we missed?
That's just the happy circumstance.
Okay, you've got 2.5. Chelsea's gone through and go back to that sheet, if you would, Laura, that we had before. The cost of this one, including all the soft costs, were up, and we don't have contingencies and all that in there. So when you get done with it, you're going to be at about 3.3 million bucks, about 3.3 million, all in on the park.
Yeah, let, yeah, let, you know, Chelsea run through the numbers like she did then.
Okay. So moving to the right side of the screen, you see park. So we didn't necessarily have an original budget, but the EOPC at 100% design of the park improvements that are on the docket was 2.511. Again, moving down, engineering, soft costs, 397,000. We had, again, other soft costs include surveying, Tony's time, et cetera. The construction bid came in at 2.529, which is darn near close to the EOPC. I have since gotten CEI and construction administrative costs for this, which I'll have to add in, which is approximately a little over 200,000. The FPL, we're confirming if we need a transformer or not. The FFNE, Furniture, fixture and equipment for the park improvements would include wayfinding signage. Again, we would direct purchase that. So moving down, the gateway, gateway is, as of right now.
Hold on, you don't have the contingency in there.
I do not have a contingency.
So when you're all done, it's about 3.3 million. Just, this, this is my problem. We need these numbers to be factual, not, this, this, this is not the way you do stuff. We, it's 3.3 million.
Well, this was a week ago. We've had time to work on this in the last week.
And we're going to get this corrected. But the issue is, it's about 3.3 million.
Okay.
So go ahead.
So moving on, down below, now we're talking funding sources. So in the 2023 bond series for Gateway, we had, we had borrowed $550,000. The park impact fee as of April, I'm still waiting on an updated figure from the county. We have $382,000 that the county has designated in a pot for us for park improvements within Gateway. If you recall, a handful of meetings ago when we were talking budget, we had unspent projects from last year that we had earmarked Parks and Rec slash pad, things like that. We had put money specifically for park projects. So we have approximately half a million dollars in that. Again, the O and M costs that we had anticipated for the park stuff was 150,000, so that's in your 25 budget. The $670,000 is the interest earnings on the 2023 bond series that we have had. If you use all of that money towards the park project, you have a shortfall of approximately 750, adding Ed's 2, 300,000, almost, almost a million. Now, like I've mentioned in this meeting, as long as you, on the bond, and we've already confirmed this from Pedro, as long as the funding stays within the same category because of how we assess, we can move money within the Parks and Rec category to reappropriate to this project. We have $650,000 in monuments and landscaping. That could be put, that's in that parks category. We could move to this project. And then there's one or two other little projects that we could, again, shift the money, reprioritize, and put it towards this park. So you could fund this park project. And again, I'm waiting on the updated figure from the county for the park impact fee. When Centosa or Garrett FM, Garrett FM comes on the docket, they're going to have to pay a park impact fee. So that'll be additional funding that we will have available for this project.
Chelsea, for these bids, a large portion of this is actually the court build-out. Where did those estimates come from?
So the, how the bid was accepted was a lump sum bid. Once you award, then you ask for a schedule of values, and that's where, that's when we would get the breakout of this specific.
But you're saying that that 2,529 construction bid, Rick, you guys jump in, that includes all of the subcontractors that bid the improvements at the park?
And the reason why I ask is because we've done some due diligence in, in court build-out, not only in the district, but I've been a part of some other projects. And I've seen pretty broad costs ranges for, for court build-out, and I'm talking apples to apples. Eight pickleball courts here, eight pickleball courts here, and a couple hundred thousand dollar difference in, in those two estimates. So I was just curious, where, where are those?
We, we don't have that until the contractor would be required to provide a schedule of values.
Okay, your problem is, you're, you're, you're dealing with subs, and that's a very, very difficult situation. You're dealing with a prime contractor, and the people that are giving the prices a sub.
Yes.
So you've got to go down the level. That, I can tell you, you lose most of those battles. It's very difficult to negotiate with a sub of a prime.
Well, and.
Very difficult.
Is this, the way this is structured, is this a not to exceed, what, what's the?
Lumps, lump sum.
Lump sum, okay.
Yes.
Because again, there's.
To Ed's point, that's why he was suggesting adding 2% to 3% contingency as part of the budgeting process.
There'll be a change order. You know there will be somewhere, someplace, somehow. It always happens. The issue I've got is that this analysis does not show the impact of Rule Chapter 6. And there should be a sharing of the cost of this based upon our ratio of EAUs. I did an analysis, and it turned out to be about the same thing we've had, 1/3, 2/3. We pay 1/3, they pay 2/3. I did that.
That's what we have now.
That is what our ratio is now. Rule 6 being, or Chapter 6 being gone, these costs are shared costs.
Chapter 6 is.
These are shared costs. That's, that's what.
We haven't adopted a change yet. So that means we're still under the 14.
Chapter, no, Chapter 6, Chapter 6 is long since gone, has been repealed. The issue I've got for Tony is, is that.
Hasn't been a change until the.
No, 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 don't, don't, don't work that way.
It does work that way.
Does not work that way. We're going to do this park. This park is going to be paid for by everybody that's a district of the community.
Tony?
Tony, what do we need to do to do that?
We have to have.
Answer the first question, please. Rule 6 is still in effect. Do we change it, correct?
No, Rule 6 has been repealed.
Correct.
Okay, so we have, there has been an assessment methodology with regards to, in the capital projects, with regards to the bond issues as to the allocation of costs for the various projects. And we, to get an additional amount from the Pelican Preserve property owners or anybody else, you need to go back through, do an assessment methodology, hold the public hearings, and notify the property owners, indicate the nature, the nature of the project, the estimated cost, and the benefit that accrues, and the amount levied on each parcel that we anticipate. And that's going to be, we talked with Russ, I think it's 16 to 90 day process at a minimum.
But until that's done.
That's right.
Until that's done, we operate under what we're doing.
Yeah, so I, what I'm suggesting is.
If the contract, if the bid is accept, is awarded today or Tuesday or whatever, before the new methodology is approved, you are under the existing methodology, correct?
Okay. The district has levied special assessments, non-advalorm special, non-advalorm special assessments against the properties in the district. That's already a cap. If the district wants to increase the amount of assessments or change the amount of assessments or add assessments, we need to go through the assessment levying and imposition process, which is going to take a 16 to 90 day period. And then part of that needs to be the determination made, a legislative determination made as to the benefit that a property receives from these park and recreational facilities and this facility. So that would require Russ to come up with a report.
And I have no problem with that.
And then.
I doubt very much it'd be 6, 2/3, 1/3.
Notice, advertise, mailings go out, people can come and object like we have always in the past. Then the board can then levy and impose the assessment. Now, there's two ways of collecting this non-advalorm special assessments. One is the way the district typically does it, and the way the bondholders love it, is on the tax bill. We have that option. That's usually what's done, because then you get a better assurance of the payment. The district doesn't administer payments. They just give it a role to the property praiser and tax collector. The other way is a direct bill process. You can directly bill the property owner for the assessment that's levy, and then they pay within a certain period of time. I can't recall the time off the top of my head. The, with the assessments being on the tax bill, if they fail to tell, they can't split on the tax. If they don't like the assessment, and it's on the tax bill, they can't say, I'm paying the, the advalorm tax, I'm not going to pay the assessment. They have to either pay it all, or if they don't pay anything, then you get tax certificates. So in the direct bill process, if they don't pay, the way to collect, if they don't pay it, is either foreclosure or you roll it into the next year's tax roll, tax bill. That's what you do.
But there's, there's another issue too here, too. There, there could be a separation. There could be very easily, according to 190, there could be a separation of the benefit on the, the capital side of this versus the O and M side. Russ has to do that calculation.
Russ has to.
It's two separate calculations. And it's a, it's a big number, because that debt portion of it is financed for 20 years if you choose to do that, which is minimal. That's, I mean, it's peanuts.
To do that, we'd have to revalidate.
Correct, correct. But my thing is, is that what we need to do is we need to get that process. I understand that is not going to happen the next Tuesday. But to proceed on it on that basis that it is going to be studied, needs to be done.
I have no problem with it being studied.
It's got to be studied.
What I object to is the 2/3, 1/3.
Yeah, no, we may not re.
I just used that number as that's what we have used.
Tony, can you answer?
That wasn't my question. My question was a question of timing. If this is approved today or Tuesday or whatever, what methodology applies to it?
Whatever exists today.
Today.
Yes.
At, at the time of approval, whatever methodology is in place at the time of approval.
But today, Carol.
Is what it is.
I understand, Carol, but keep in mind, right now, it's 1427, and that's about as close to 1/3, 2/3 as you get.
You know, but that's what it is today, but it can be changed.
Yes.
But that's another question. The question is, if it's approved today, we operate under what's on the books today.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Until, until it's changed.
Yeah.
So we're not, we're not.
So I really didn't, I didn't have any problem with, with, on the basis of 1/3, 2/3, and I know that's argumentative. But on the basis of that, going through the calculations of the debt financing, and going through the calculations, and assuming that you guys would do debt instead of paying cash, and that's all up in the air, it came out to me that for the Gateway resident, this plan would be about $35 a year. To me, that.
And that's at 7 million dollars.
No, that's, it's just a part.
3.3, I think is what Ed said.
And Pelican Preserve, Pelican Reserve share came out 4990 to 50 bucks. So that's kind of the numbers you're dealing with on this right here.
We're really talking about, for both projects, it's about 100 bucks.
About 100 dollars. And that's what Chelsea, Bob and I have been talking about for the last two weeks. Everything is going to be somewhere in our neighborhood, about 100 bucks.
Yeah.
Annual.
Annually, yeah.
Yeah, annually. And I, I just don't see, at this point in time, that you're going to get a much better deal than this.
So we, so we will table this item till Tuesday.
You have.
With, with the, and then with that being said, is that also, do we, do we table the additional G and H?
That would be my suggestion.
Which ones?
G and H is tabled. So we'll push that Tuesday as well?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, Chelsea, I think what you're thinking is, if there is a determination made to increase or add additional assessment level to the Pelican Reserve properties for a parks component, that there would not be debt financing, it would just be an annual. It wouldn't be part of any of the 20-year borrowing, right?
If you come back Tuesday, there's no sense why we can't take, get these final numbers, get all the contingencies and everything in there, and then have a Gateway side, a Pelican side. It's going to be argumentative, but we pick a number and we show a distribution. If it changes to something else, it changes to something else. But at least we see ballpark what we're dealing with. Because we got to, we got to sell this in this community. We got to sell this in this community. We go out and we have a project after the repeal of Chapter 6, and we don't enact that, there's, there's going to be skin out there on the street, and I'm afraid it's going to be mine. And I'm not going to, I'm not going to do that.
Can, can we move to aye? Because I've got a.
What do you need? Aye?
Yeah, just.
Tony, you, this is kind of your deal. Are all of the straggler policy, or processes, I looked at this, and I didn't see any that we missed, but is everything in here now that we accept this resolution with WCI?
We don't believe we missed any. In fact, I think at the last minute, there were a couple other parcels that were picked up by Alyssa.
That are not included.
They are included.
Are included.
Yes. So I think there were two or three more that she had picked up. So we believe we've captured everything.
So to give you a quick, quick history lesson, this started well over a year and a half ago. This has come in front of you once or twice. Pelican Preserve Community Association asked you to remove a couple items. That way, WCI could transfer to them. That occurred. We finally cleaned up everything.
It did occur.
It did occur, yes. There were handfuls. There were two parcels that transferred. One was the RV lot, and one was in front of Materito Four.
Correct.
Which in, which in turn, we ended up getting a landscape maintenance season for. But this is the remaining set of parcels that.
And how many of them are Pelican?
The majority of them are.
Three, six, nine are Pelican, yeah.
So we're at the point of WCI, I think, is at, or it's end with talking to us about these, so we're suggesting acceptance.
But has WCI talked to Pelican about the nine that are Pelicans?
I, I don't know.
Okay, well, it hasn't happened. So I, I moved to table this until January.
I would like, I can support that, or to take the nine out of Pelican, keep the others going forward.
So I'm going to.
Let's just do them all, one, let's just do them all at once and take, Tony, what do you think on that?
Yeah, go ahead, Kelly, Chelsea.
So, like I mentioned to Jim, there are a handful of parcels on here that are in Pelican that are roadways, that are, that include roadways which include sidewalks. We have received complaints of issues on these. As of right now, I'm calling up WCI and say, hey, come fix this pothole. It would be a.
What's that getting you?
Exactly. So part of this is wrapping up and cleaning up all of these straggler parcels and accepting them, so that way we can truly go out and do what we need to do. Tony, you can caveat it all you want.
No, I disagree with you.
Talking about these straggler parcels.
No, I disagree with you. I, no, I disagree because the right of ways are dedicated to the district for ingress and egress and the road right of way. So the district has.
That's not an issue.
That's correct, in my opinion. I've already opined on that last week.
I, again.
But we, but it is, we do need to clean this up and get the fee title. Absolutely.
So.
I know, but this has been going on for years. Why not let the community association just take a look at it? They know they've got to come to something by January. Let's just give them a little bit of time.
Carol, to my, to, they've seen this before.
My question is, they have, yes.
They've seen this before. They've seen this list. Nancy Straw came up in person and mentioned and asked about it.
That was the two parcels that we took out.
Correct, but they were included as part of this list, this whole list.
There were 19 parcels.
So they've had, they too have had over a year to question this and ask for them.
Is there, other than the issue of going to WCI to ask them to fix a sidewalk that ain't going to happen, what, what's the harm of waiting till the January? Does anybody have any other issue?
To get it off her plate?
Yeah, I'd like to.
We all want to get it off the.
We all want to get it off.
But we've been requested to give some consideration.
Is there any reason we have to wait till January? Can we do it till December? Can we do it in December?
Jim, how long you need? How long is it going to take you to make an adjustment?
They've already been reviewed by the community association. They've agreed that they should go to Gateway. The only concern I have is Tony said there are two or three others that popped up, which I don't know that those have been reviewed, but those may have popped up before they reviewed them.
Why we couldn't get you guys to look at it and come back and tell us in December 5th?
If you give me a list, I can look at them tomorrow, so.
Let's do that then.
The two or three that popped up, are those in Pelican or are they in Gateway?
I can't recall. I mean, what, I think what we.
I can't.
Flavia, go ahead.
Sorry, I couldn't, I couldn't hear Laura. If, and, and I just have a question. So if, if the, I don't know who the gentleman that was speaking, but if he says they already, Ed, if he already looked at it, and the only concern is the three, can they look at those three by Tuesday? Like, if it's only three parcels, look at it by Tuesday. We have a meeting on Tuesday.
I think it's nine, Flavia, but.
Well, yeah, Flavia, I, I believe I can go back and retrieve the email from Pavees, where they added a couple of those parcels and send those to Ed.
Yeah, because if it's, if, if Ed's saying they already looked at it and agreed to pass it on to us, and they may be three, I mean, I think three is reasonable for them to get an answer by Tuesday.
Yeah, can, can we do this and at least get these, to have it off on the 5th? Get a decision from PPAC that everything is good, so that we can get this off the table for the end of the year? This has been going on forever. Does that work?
Table to December 5th?
Table it to December.
And I will send the email where the additional parcels were added, so that they can pull those out.
And then if, if PPAC can get back to Bob or Carol, let us know that everything is go, because we got to get rid of this. This is ridiculous.
We totally agree. We really.
It is, yeah. We want, we should make sure, we just want to make sure we do it right. Okay, so that's the 5th.
I just want a clarification. Are we doing on Tuesday or December 5th? I'm just writing my notes.
The 5th.
Okay.
We're moving to the 5th.
Yeah, move it to the 5th, Flavia.
Yeah, December the 5th.
And hopefully we'll bury this sucker finally. District manager items. Chelsea?
Monthly reports. So first up is Lauren Administration. I'd like to call out the admin hours for Pelican Preserve that are identified in here as requested by Bob Gepfer.
We can see it now.
Can you put it up there?
This is for.
Do you want to make note for the record that Doug Gepfer has heard?
Yeah, Bob, show, the records show that Doug has left the meeting at 5:35.
I guess I hate be joining remotely, but in the meantime, he's.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, so there's a, there's a spreadsheet that goes out, well, actually, it's available anytime on the SharePoint site. But I send a link out every Wednesday as we update the hours for the admin and maintenance team. All I did was take this page, which is how I get the numbers that I plug in the summer, into the summary page that gets sent out. Each one has the date, has how many hours are spent per fund, and we only include things in the notes that are relevant to Pelican because no one else asks us to track our, to track our time, so we don't include our other tasks.
And individual's names up in the.
And then everybody's name is up here. So like, this is Chelsea's sheet. Here's Daniel's. This one's mine. Here's Randy's. Here's Georgia's. Julie, Nathan, L, Stephanie, and then that's it. And Daniel has the maintenance, and Mark, who is the supervisor for the maintenance guys, included in his public works report.
This is as of October 1st.
This is for the month of October.
Will Dodge, yes, have any questions? I'll come to you.
Do you have, are you seeing this, do we have a summary of running cumulative summary?
Sent out every month, every Wednesday.
So I mean, so that we can see like for a quarter, what it's going, so we can project for a year maybe?
I can, I'm already sending that out, but I can, I can add that.
Okay, so.
Well, that just make it easier than somebody having to add all those numbers up.
No, she's got it. Do you have that in his packet, Laura?
Nope.
We can add it from the next one.
He's got it.
Okay, so the purpose of this was to track and compare how much is actually being spent, how much time is actually being spent, and what was budgeted. So I, I need a column in here or something that will tell me how does this compare to what is budget, what was budgeted for?
That's, that's what's in the summary report.
Laura has.
That's in the weekly summary, well, it's in the summary report on the SharePoint site, but I will also include it in this going forward. You already have access to all of that information. The link is mailed to you every Wednesday. You can go in anytime and look at it, but I will include it in this as well.
Okay, and then can we keep a running total of it also, starting October 1st? Because that was the beginning of our new budget year.
Again, it's already on the summary that you have access to on the SharePoint site. I will include it in here going forward. You can already look at it all. You have the data. It's there. You can go anytime you want to look at it. It's on the internet.
You need a tutorial.
Okay.
So what it boils down to is, is that if we had budgeted.
In other words, I should print it out and come over here and say, okay, how much is this, Laura?
That's what I do. If, if, so if you had budgeted for the year, for example, Chelsea's time of 80 hours, this will allow you to look on a monthly basis of how you're accumulating versus the 80 hours or whatever.
You have access to it too. I sent it to your district email. There's a link. You click it, and it magically opens up the spreadsheet.
This is the only, this is the only document that we send out consistently every week to outside staff.
Yes.
Gotcha. And this is, everybody that's in the 2025 projected budget that has an assignment of time dedicated to Pelican Preserve.
Correct, is on that sheet.
Did you get what you're looking for?
Oh, yeah, that's what I'm.
Okay, so Bob, did you want to discuss that one repair?
Well, no, I covered up a deck. We had a repair when four people showed up.
That would be a Daniel's.
He took care of that. I'm okay with that.
Okay, and you adjusted things accordingly?
And, and we got it just for the.
So do you have any more questions for my report, since we're moving off of it? Is there anything else for admin?
I don't have anything. Okay.
The only other admin comment was what we discussed tonight, that the hours that the maintenance crew.
Public Works.
So we'll cover it. Okay, I'll be quiet.
Flavia, did you have something?
No, she said.
No, not for admin. I did not.
Okay, okay. Next.
We have the Daniel. So Bob, if you want to, I'll just reiterate real quick, and I've already talked to Daniel about it. There was multiple tracking efforts occurring over different documents. Since then, the landscape subcommittee is going to head up the monument tracking document. Staff is just going to use our time tracker.
And I believe that that's what landscaping has been trying to do all along, but somehow we got connected. We'll get it aligned tomorrow. There's a meeting and everything will become formal.
The impetus behind a lot of this, and from what I understand, is to Carol's point early on in budget discussions, was to reduce the staff burden as well as utilize your free volunteers. So we have given all of the tools available to your subcommittees. Now, if they need assistance or if any board members need assistance accessing SharePoint, we'd be more than happy to give a tutorial. But I'll touch on the other point. I talked to Daniel. We talked about, and I believe Bob, you've had a conversation with Daniel about the staffing on that specific project to Pelican. We comped the hours back to Pelican. Staff will be more frugal with their hours and how we handle things.
The comment we got was, hey, this looks like a typical public works project. I see one guy working and three watching. And I'll leave it at that.
They all had yellow jackets on?
Oh, yeah.
They weren't, they weren't leaning on the shop.
They weren't leaning on the shop.
Any, any questions for, for Dan? I have, I have one. Is the, where are we? Haven't heard anything on our irrigation study. Where are they, where are those people at?
The irrigation.
Had them this morning.
RWA, we sat down today, outlined areas, basically that was the best, the best that we had.
Too far in, I'd like to see a preliminary plan of what, what they've got, of what this is looking like.
You're gonna get 30% design in February.
February?
February.
Is what we're shooting for right now. So part of that we talked about this morning was Griffin doing some enhancements of landscaping on Griffin, since they're doing the design of the irrigation. So that, that'll be coming, that task authorization will be coming in front of you probably on December 5th, if not first meeting January. It's moving, it's just, there's a lot of research that needs to be done because nothing was documented.
Yeah, so it was the best guess from based off of what Manscape had given us for the irrigation design as it stood, as they saw it. Chelsea and I and Nathan sat down with James Martin from RWA this morning and went through, what, 40 sheets?
Is that only giggle or is that giggling?
Only giggle.
But one thing that I've learned, just as a result of the FPL and some other projects, when they're doing this, we got to make sure that to play it safe. If we're going with a two-wire system, they better be looking and putting this stuff in conduits. We've had FPLs cut our system in pieces doing the bores.
Same.
Yep.
Same. It's all right.
So we need to have that protection going on, or we have a damn good set of ASBILs of where those wires are because they are so, they're supposed to be down eight inches at least.
Three, four inches.
Two, one. A guy comes along.
That's the problem with boards, everything floats. It gets up, it gets pushed up over time with weather.
Yep, yep. So we need to, I hate to spend $2 million only to have it cut and, cut, cut like ribbons.
That's why we let them go first.
Okay, so at 30%, are you going to have an estimated cost?
Yes.
It'll, 30% is going to come in front of the board, and RWA is going to do a presentation to you.
Well, because going through the, the building, I'll just go back to the building. At 30%, you said, well, you know, this is what it's going to look like, and then, and Ed says, well, I think you should turn it this way, and every, 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 and what, and. But we never got, we were still going with the 3.6 figure that was the bond figure. And until you got to, until you got to the 100% mark, and that's when it jumped from 3.6 to 5.5, was it? Or 5. something or other.
Five bucks.
5.5. So will they have
So they'll have the fine.
An estimated cost at the 30% level?
Yes. They, they're going to break it up between two different models that they're looking for based off of our needs, the recommendation from the architect on that side of the house. So we'll have two different models, and we'll be able to define all of our landscape easement areas that we're going to be maintaining, that we are currently maintaining. And then there's going to be a beautification portion of it that, you know, future design of landscape that we want to anticipate before, we'll have that as, as well added in.
Carol, I'm going to caveat this. Tetra Tech did the engineer's report, and their assessment of what they thought this project would be. You have a completely different engineer. I'm just going to caveat that because I don't know. I, I would hope that they're the same, but I, we'll see at 30%. 30% understand is like 30,000 foot overview.
But your, your real issue is, is just exactly how much of this system is going to be under, a two-wire system, and how much is going to be under nodes. Thank God, we don't have a lot of cul-de-sacs here like we do in Pelican Reserve and Gateway, where you just can't afford to run those wires really nearly everywhere. So their system probably, I would hope these numbers would match up pretty close.
Me too, but I'm just, I'm going to caveat that.
I hope, I hope.
All right, anything else for Daniel?
I just want to give him an attaboy, and, and for Chelsea too, because I'm happy to report the bidding process for the ponds in Pelican Preserve.
She's having a heart attack.
Forty-seven, forty-seven, and, or 43 and 48 are using the abbreviated methodology, and we don't need a 47-page contract from Tony. And we're going to keep both of those projects this year under $190,000.
$195,000.
We, we never got to it in the discussion, and you let it go, so I figured you were satisfied. Carol had brought up the last meeting the issue, did we get a enumeration of the ponds and the wetlands in the community? Has that been resolved? Because it changed. At the last meeting, Carol asked how many ponds and how many wetlands, because there was a challenge that maybe the numbers were incorrect. I saw that the engineer's report changed the number, so I'm, is everybody happy?
Tetra Tech was tasked with doing that.
Okay, is everybody happy?
I didn't see it.
It's in the engineer's report that came up today. They changed the number.
It was in the Tetra Tech one.
Yeah, I missed it. Okay.
And we changed it. It was reduced.
It's why it's a draft report, and it's not final. That's why we can continue to make updates.
Okay. Anybody have anything else for Dan?
Well, that's a big, that's, that'll save us a couple hundred thousand dollars. I'm going to minimize that. That was a big one.
Let's go on. Early bond payoff.
No, no, you've got Bill Shaw.
Oh, Billy.
Anything for Mr. Shaw?
You, we already talked. You've got Timber Ridge Cummings to be able to get that taken care of, so that's good.
Okay, just a question while Bill is here. If the administrative building is approved, probably by a 3-2 vote, but is approved, when are you going to have to go through a whole new rate study and whatever to include the amount of the shortfall that's going to have to come from the utilities things?
I can answer that. So we did account for that up to the 5.5 mil as part of the rate when we did it last year. So we would have a minor shortfall of the 59, the extra 200,000, 59% of the extra 200,000. And that was confirmed with our rate consultant.
We went back and caught most of the stakes.
We did, we did.
Okay, so we've accounted.
So what about for the second and third and fourth years for the O and M?
Yes.
Are, so are we going to have to have a rate adjustment every year to accommodate that?
We, we accounted for that as part of the rate study.
Hopefully, the answer to that is no, that we got it counted for. Hopefully, we got it. I'm not so worried about the operation maintenance side of it. The one that's got me is the reserve side. There's where all the money's at, the capital reserve.
Right.
That's big bucks.
To the best of our knowledge, we accounted for all of that ahead of time because by the time, we were like right down to the last day
when we were putting those, the, the numbers together for the rate study for the consultant, we had gotten those higher numbers from the engineer already as estimates for the admin building. So we, we were fortunate enough that we had the numbers at that point, so we could account for that in the rate study, so we didn't have to do a new rate study.
That's when we get to bring those guys back in.
Yep.
For that meeting.
Yeah, that's why, that's why it took a little longer. We wanted to make sure we were very thorough.
So the earliest you could change that would be this summer when we're going through the budgeting process?
If you change.
If you need to.
If you need to, but I don't see it.
Hopefully, we won't need to.
We, we shouldn't need to. We planned for capital reserves. We planned for maintenance. We planned for capital projects. We planned for the admin building. We looked at all of that. Yes, for the next five years. So we shouldn't need to revisit the rates until, for, unless something happens that we're not expecting for probably at least four, four years. Right.
The true up, yeah.
Yeah, so for at least four years, so that will be ahead of it. Yeah, thank you.
Flavia, did you say something?
Yeah, I, I just want to mention something because I think Doug, it's totally running out of this. But Chelsea, I'm trying to just go on the website and look at the agenda because I want to look at things that you guys are scrolling down because I can't read it. And it keeps dropping. It's no longer showing up at the board meeting or past events. So if we can delay that for like to drop on the following day instead of the day of the meeting.
We'll see. We'll talk to Granica. They think our meeting's over, and it's still happening.
Right.
Yeah.
Yep.
Anything else for Billy?
No.
Okay, Bill, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Series 2023 bond, I'm taking that that letter that you sent out is the delineation that defusing of that bond ain't going to happen for nine years.
Carol requested this information at the last meeting, and this is a follow-up from Pedro.
Okay.
No, no wiggle room.
Nope.
Okay.
Even with the penalty, no wiggle room.
Okay.
Even with a penalty?
Yes. So would it be possible to take the money that Pelican owes for the bonds, put it in an escrow account that would be held by bond counsel or bond company or wherever? Allow it to, so it would no longer be under the control of the GSDD or Pelican or whatever. It would be in somebody else's control. And at the, whatever time might happen, whether it's a refinancing time or a payoff time or whatever, that money would be taken from the escrow account and used to pay off the bonds, but it would no longer be in Pelican's control.
Typically, you have a bond escrow account to begin with.
Yeah, the trustee holds the bond.
The money is sitting with the trustee, so.
Those guys don't want to have it lying in somebody else's stealing.
What I'm saying is, like, if you, if you close on a property and something still isn't done, they take money and they put it in escrow account, so you have no control over it anymore. You've paid your money in.
We should have that right now.
And you, and you, so you would not have it on your tax bill anymore, that, whatever that amount is for the 2023 taxes. You wouldn't have it on your tax bill anymore. And at whatever time, and they can earn interest on it. They can do whatever. And at whatever time is appropriate, they pay it out.
We have to look at the bond issue and the bond themselves to see.
If you get a number of collections.
They could prepay the bond, if they prepay the bond, individuals, when I have the district payoff, prepay the assessment. Like prepaid, I get the, what's my payoff number today? It's bottom of the top here. And then you pay, you would pay that, and then that would go to the trustee to hold it. I forgot where the county would go in, and what would happen to put the flow of funds. We can double check the payroll. But that's an individual basis. People, people would need to, they want to pre, get it off the tax.
On their own.
The only way to get it off the tax roll is to prepay as to that.
And we had this conversation with Pedro, and he looked into it. You could prepay, you cannot pay off. So if, one, one of the, let me give you an example of the, one of the questions that I had asked. So on the Gateway bond series, under the roadway management category, we had, we have borrowed almost $8 million in the 2023 bond series for the FPL streetlight conversion project. We have cut FPL the check for almost half a million dollars. We damn well aren't going to have $7.5 million worth of expenses. Now, the conversation I had with Pedro was, going back, you can move that money within the roadway category if you have other projects that are not complete or they come over budget, et cetera.
Including the interest?
Yes.
The interest can't go outside the category?
Uh, I don't know about that. I'll have to follow up.
Interest usually follows principal, so that's what I thought.
So, so his response to me was, if you finish all of your roadway category projects and your engineer signs off on that, that project is complete, you could take whatever is remaining and pay it, pay it back, like prepaid. Essentially, that portion to it.
Because the project certified as complete.
Yes. So that's a caveat way around.
I mean, I guess maybe also, maybe a question for Pedro, to the extent that I'm a property owner, I want it off my tax bill. I can prepay. I get in a stopple letter that says, here's the amount you want to pay your debt service in full for this bond issue. That gets paid to trustee, and then how and when the trustee remits that to the bondholders is a function of how the bond documents read, and we can double check with.
So to your interest, to your interest point, really, you have, you have. So to your interest, to your interest point, really, you have, you have two accounts, you have a, a construction account, and then you have the, um, bot issuance, the cost of issuance account, and so the interest stays within the construction account.
Which is the very one.
Which is why we're able to use some of it towards the projects.
That's what we're doing.
Yes, exactly.
Yes.
Gotcha.
Carol, did that answer your question? Yes or no? Probably not in a roundabout way.
Well, I think you're protected on the bond.
No, it's not really an escrow, it's, in other words.
Right.
The trustee holds on to it and applies the funds, retains the funds as outlined in the bond documents. There are a number of different funds that are set up in the bond documents.
Okay.
And we can go back and double check what those are, and where those money would stay or go.
But according to you, that has, that is taxpayer by taxpayer, individual.
Property owner by property owner, correct.
As opposed to what I was asking, whether.
Pay them off entirely.
Correct. Well, put it in.
Put it in a different places, yeah.
Pay off the amount that's owed, put it in an escrow account, and allow them to pay off, get off on the bonds whenever they want to, which would then erase the.
So they'll let you prepay it, but they won't let you pay off.
In other words, the concept would be, whatever, whatever the remaining principal interest amount is, pay that money into an account. And again, the typical process is you pay it to the trustee, because the trustee.
Yeah, you can, if you can prepay and not pay off, why would you wanna prepay?
It's, you're just giving them your money.
Okay.
Might be some interest earned.
Well, if you could just ask the question, I would appreciate it.
Okay, anything else on, uh, the bond payoff?
Just following up on that item.
Tony, District Attorney, project up.
Uh, number of items, again, Lee Health, uh, again, no new documents, again, as of November first, the Lee Health property, Lee Health is no longer a governmental entity, so the district gets the opportunity to levy special assessments against them on next budget year and thereafter, because they are nonprofit, but they can be assessed. So, uh, that's their office building over here on Gateway Boulevard. The, uh, infrastructure easements, we have a couple little glitches on those, we completed them, then we had a couple little hiccups, so we're doing that little cleanup on those various easement and monument documents. Janopi, we got a document back that, well, we're not happy with one section of it as far as their liability, they wanna limit their liability to what the value of the contract and their services, and so we're asking them to at least have liability to the coverage that they have to provide, their insurance coverage, so we're at loggerheads with them. FPL consent to use, you all approved that today, Treeline Colonial Properties, uh, we hear that resolution, that's all prepared for that, that's ready to declare it surplus. The.
And, and that is still sitting with PPAK.
Okay.
So they're still discussing it.
Okay.
I signed the paper for the appraisal.
Okay.
Very good.
Nine, I think it was nine hundred bucks.
That's not bad.
Just going on to the next page, I guess.
I'm, I'm used to appraisals at four or five thousand.
Stony Brook Roads and Streets is a follow-up, Katie Berkey, the attorney, one of the attorneys for the Stony Brook Master and Al, and one of the partners in the law firm, Alan Levine, Levine and I had a nice conversation, uh, as to different approaches, then we had a follow-up call this past Monday with an Assistant Attorney General that was involved in authoring that opinion, to try to offer some additional facts or try to get some revisions and modifications, or I'll call adjustments to their opinion. They're going back and looking at it, I'm not optimistic that they're going to change it, but it was a good conversation that we had. And, uh, so that's still a possibility of some alternative approaches that we may have to engage in to try to get that answer resolved. Along the same lines, but it's, it's similar, uh, in dealing with Jennifer Kolinsky, the attorney for the Residence Alliance in Pelican Reserve, on the contraction issue, she agreed with my opinion that it does require the consent of all the landowners in the area to be contracted or removed regardless of the acreage involved. But then I also sent her the, uh, roadway attorney general's opinion, and then we had some communications with regards to that, you know, in case Pelican Reserve, uh, and the district wanted to give the roads to the city of Fort Myers, how that could happen, you know, maybe an M, memorandum of understanding back between the city and the residents as far as the roadway component, but that's, that was an email that we had. The, uh, let's see, monument that's completed, complete Daniels Parkway Utility Issues, uh, one, by January second, that first board meeting in January, hope to bring back to you, uh, the upsizing agreement as well as the agreement for the use of the wells. And the connection fees, I completed that, but I'm going to revise it if we can get, and again, again, the determination of the allocation of the number of individuals and increased need for additional space or capital facility based upon increased demands on the system from new users and new customers. Changes to utility rules, you'll have that on December fifth.
Okay.
And you'll see in, if you read them in the Fort Myers News Press and you like big ads, on Saturday, you should see the big notice for the public hearing for the utilities, uh, utility rates, fees and charges. I know it was already in the utility bill, but this is a separate notice that needs to go out. I appreciate staff working on that and quick turnaround.
In, in the interest of time, uh, the issue on the Sunshine Law and the Commission on Ethics.
None.
I don't know about the other two guys that are here, but I am up to about right here on Sunshine, we went through four hours of that, of listening to that tape.
I wasn't gonna get.
I appreciate looking at it, but I really don't wanna talk about it.
My, my plan was not to have any presentation, we've had a presentation recently on it, this was more of an update from the hard copy format.
There were a good, couple of good comics in there.
Yes, and that's it, and that's it.
Yeah.
Tony, I have, I have another question.
Yes, sir.
About the Pelican Reserve funds dispute, is that totally going out, is that over?
No, no, settlement's not.
We have a draft settlement agreement that I'm gonna bring, uh, December fifth.
December fifth?
December fifth.
That's when we're supposed to get it?
You're gonna get it.
Oh, no, I haven't, I have that.
Because I thought we had that pretty well settled, yeah.
No, there's a document, Steve Adamsick, on behalf of PPCA, prepared a document, I'm gonna review that and have it on the agenda for December fifth. And speaking of the Adamsic brother attorneys, I have Mark's revised version of the documents for Gateway Greens, uh, translated.
Yes, yeah.
So I'm looking at that, and if I don't make December fifth, we'll do the January board.
Good, because I looked at that, and I said, as long as Tony's happy with that, it looked good to me.
Yeah, I just asked him for more detail and specificity, so I have, I've not had a chance to look at that yet.
Okay, well, I saw a red line, and it, it, it looked good to me.
I sent him the Hampton Park documents and Plaza documents, to use those as the, as the template.
Okay.
And Mark's always good to work with, as well as Steve, they're both good to work with.
Anything else, don't?
Okay, but you haven't reviewed the, uh, agreement?
No.
Between?
It's a two and a half pager, it should be quick.
Okay.
It's a two, it's a two and a half pager, it should be quick.
Which agreement?
Okay, so, other than just the time to review it and to do your job properly, you don't see any hitch?
Unless there's some, uh, mind, mind in.
To that ten thousand.
Something of the weeds?
Something, something that's, but again, I can't, I can't imagine, oh, I'm not gonna say this, hopefully there's nothing in there that's gonna jump out at me and say this is obnoxious.
Okay.
Flavi, did you have anything for Tony? She may have dropped off.
No, I did not.
Any, do you have anything for, uh, Tony?
She's on that.
Oh, I did not.
Bob, anything?
Oh.
Okay, I do.
Appreciate all your time this week, Tony, and going over all this stuff, this stuff, it's complicated, and it's very difficult. I don't, I don't ever remember doing a job, and I certainly didn't do it up north. Bond counsel was in your face. I wouldn't know Pedro if he walked in that door right now. These, these guys need to show up. I mean, we're doing a lot of business with these people, one hell of a lot of business, and their fees are exorbitant, you gotta show up.
I think he should. Hey, I haven't got a bill.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna bill.
Okay.
They're not cheap.
That's just, that's my.
I think Carol had one thing for Tony.
Yes, yeah, Carol tried.
Yes, uh, so who is going to reach out and negotiate with this, the building owner?
I am.
That might have property for lease?
I am.
Just you alone?
Well, Laura and I.
We will tag it.
Okay, and are you gonna?
Wheel and deal.
Offer suggestions as to how they, maybe, can we buy, condo it?
I asked, I asked those questions today, I've yet to get a response. We did receive, I originally asked the realtor for a fifteen-year lease, because I didn't think they'd give us a thirty, I said, hell, let's try for fifteen. They countered with a ten and gave us the, the numbers and the rates for a ten, understanding, I just met with her yesterday morning, and said, I said, hey, I need this now. They, the, the property owner had already agreed to do painting and carpet, new carpet. There's some other cosmetic things, we would have to put in a security system, build a dais, have the audio video equipment, put in a, a door to segregate.
Have you been in the building?
No, nobody does.
We, we need to probably look at it just so that we know what we're talking about to go down there.
If I can, if I can see one-on-one to see if I can schedule some, take the realtor and say, hey, I need two hours of your time and schedule you all accordingly.
One at a time, like Chelsea said, yes.
One at a time, emphasize the time.
Keep in mind, that, that, that deal that they're talking about is fourteen thousand square feet, that is a fricking big area.
Laura, Laura in, was geeking out in the IT room on the wall, they had a big map of,
I have a proper server room there.
So she took a picture of the layout of the offices, we've already kind of said who would go where in the event that this is what you all chose to move forward with, so.
But you're not changing the theory of what was going in the new building? It, it, we're still on that concept.
Yes, I, I, we're having, having both running in tandem.
Two separate.
So Laura and I will be negotiating with the realtor, I would love to go around the realtor, because we know who the owner is, but, um, I'm gonna continue to work through her with Laura and negotiating better terms.
And that parking out in front of the building by school people is abandoned away.
There's forty-two parking spots that would come with the, the, the area.
If you get into the building.
Yeah, and a couple of thoughts, maybe, if you haven't already talked to them about whether or not they planned on, you know, filing a declaration of condominium to create units.
Well, I asked, I, I originally, to Carol's point, I asked if the owner would be interested in selling, I asked that, I haven't got a response back, um, but I will ask that condominium question as well.
Also, the district could sublease, to the extent that you don't need the full fourteen, the district decides it doesn't need the full fourteen, depending upon the layout, you could, maybe, some conversation.
So if you bought the whole fifty thousand, you could sublease forty of it?
He operates his business out of the one side, I don't see that, I don't see.
No, no, what I'm saying is, if you, if the district.
Yeah, but he might want just a little bit of space in case his business expands.
Or if the district leases the full fourteen thousand, say.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The, the question is, would he have any objection to say?
To sublet.
To someone, there's like four thousand of them.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
You know, that way you can get a, you can pay a portion of the rent, reduce the cost, yeah.
Okay.
And, and also, um, because we're a government entity, we don't pay property taxes, right?
Well, that would, that property tax is included as part of the CAM, he still has to pay the property tax. That's a perk of owning, that's a perk of owning our own bid, our, our.
But his property tax would be drastically reduced, if he condoed it and sold that to us, then he'd only be paying property tax on that other side.
Yeah, but then he, well, yeah, agreed, but then he'd lose the revenue on whatever he's making on us, so I.
It's all it pays for his side.
So at year one, it's ten dollars a square foot, that's the number she gave, at year ten, it was nineteen and some changes, or actually.
It went up, it went up twenty-five percent for year two.
You could pass this around, this was, this was, again, I have not countered this, this came across.
That's the analysis that you gave?
No.
Oh, that's a new idea.
That is just, that is just her proposal that she sent back, so you can see.
It went up twenty-five percent.
For year two, it went up twenty percent for year three, and then it went up four percent annually after that for year ten.
Four, four to four and a half percent CAM, and the CAM includes common area maintenance, you, you're familiar, you know what a CAM is, you live in a condo. Um, it does not include a water bill or electricity, I do know for a fact, since, you know, we did the water, unless he sub meters it, there's only one meter dedicated to that building, so we've already looked into that. So we have done some due diligence, but as part of like wheel and deal, and I have not gotten to that one. Again, just saw it yesterday.
Right.
And, and I understand it's almost fourteen and a half thousand, you built nine, these numbers, number dropped by about a third.
How it's laid out, truthfully, we, so Tony, so we'd be better off?
That's my problem, I haven't seen it, so I have no idea.
We'd be better off, we'd be, we'd be better off subletting if we could.
Yeah, and I guess the other question is, the, the, I can't recall, if the, if the government bodies of tenant, they have to pay the sales tax on, but it's only two percent anyways now, they lowered it on commercial properties from four and a half percent to two percent.
I know we are paying tax, we are not.
You are?
We are not.
So they're.
Not on.
My, my only concern is, is negotiating a term, because that, that puts us in a position of uncertainty.
Yeah, we don't know, in five years, they could change their minds, say, no, get out.
I know, so that's, that's your, that's your challenge.
So if you could arrange sometime, I would be interested in looking.
Would anybody else be interested?
Yeah, I would, I'd like to look at it, I can go basically any time.
I will probably schedule that, maybe, um, Monday, and I, individually, I'll, I'll contact her tomorrow.
Uh, oh, thanks.
Say goodbye.
Thank you.
Future board business. You guys got anything?
Yes.
Oh, oh, no, I was just gonna do a summary, go ahead.
I'll wait till supervisor comments.
Okay.
Um, one thing I will call out on here on this agenda management. Uh, there's some pictures I took, there's like thirty-some pictures that you wanna swipe through, um, we have a lot of bids out, um, one of the things on here that is not going to come to you in January is the annual audit services, the timing of that, we've gotta talk to Tony, um, but we have, anything else you'd like to see add or prioritize on this?
We do have to get that audit, we can't drag our feet with the audit, because if you expect to have it by the end of March, and we don't bid it out until February.
What do we need to do, what do we need to do?
Um. We're gonna have a conversation tomorrow with Tony, because if we put it out to bid right now, it doesn't award until February, which is problematic.
That is immensely problematic, can't get it done.
Well, the problem is, it's called the Auditor Selection Committee, the board considers the Auditor Selection Committee, or you can have three people, but it can't be the manager or the staff, it has to be, it could be a board member and two other people.
We're gonna have a follow-up call tomorrow, to see if we can just solicit.
What else?[1547.01]
Nothing.
Any, anybody have any questions on the agenda?
I saw about eight or nine.
Anything, anything else? Supervisor comments, Carol?
Yeah, um, we got an email from this Frank Parker about the grass in his back and how it's not, and a, um, a nice tutorial on grass and all this sort of stuff. I appreciate it, Frank. Where, where does that stand?
So, he has Palmetto, which is a part of the.
Brand of Saint Augustine.
Brand of Saint Augustine.
No, I understand it, just.
So as of right now, but I don't have any plans to change that to Palmetto, but I have asked the contractor to give us a price on the cost of changing it to Palmetto if the boards that chooses. Doug is.
I, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Doug is on YouTube, he's not joined through the teams and he just says that he has no comments for supervisor comments.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, I, I think this is a very small little anthill and the best thing would be to just, I think he should replace the grass at his expense and we pay for it. In other words, go get the grass that you want and that half of the thing.
Send us a bill.
And let us, and pay the bill.
Here's my only issue with that.
Cause sometimes, sometimes you make a mistake.
PR.
And if you, if you insist on doing it the right way and the way it should be done, all that sort of stuff, you create a mountain out of a little mo hill. And I think this is still at the mo hill stage if we would just do it. My personal opinion.
Here's, here's my two cents for that. If, what I would suggest, if the board wishes for me to do that, A, you're opening up a can of worms, which it is what it is, you can't put it back in. But I would recommend having our contractor do it because that way I can hold him to his warranty. Whereas if the homeowner did it, I can't hold the contractor to the warranty period.
Well, if we were doing it really technically right, when we were putting together the plans and specs, the person who was doing the site work on that would have had that this yard required that, that product to be put back in and you bid it that away.
Yeah, but that didn't happen.
That didn't happen.
So.
And I agree with you on the PR.
Okay.
Right now is the mobile, let's go, let it get out of hand.
So I would, do you need a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I move that we.
Have the contractor.
You have the contractor install Palmetto grass at Frank Parker's home.
Yes.
Any discussion, anybody else? Okay, I, I agree.
Okay, what about the odor issue over at Stony Brook?
So we're, sign the contract, he's, he's got to go out and do sampling, which that takes, I believe the contract called for thirty plus days. So that's, that's where we're at with that.
I haven't heard the Navy's being wrestled with. Is it, has that dropped?
We had, we had.
Has it minimized?
Yes, we had one night where the wind shifted and, and we did have issues. From Stony Brook, or from the, um, well, from. Flav, okay, never mind. We are getting the, the reports every time of Oqua, who is the vendor who maintains the unit. I actually just got one this morning. But since then, we've had one complaint from, from him. Seems like the unit's working, but we're still proceeding with the other issue.
Okay, and then the other thing was, I noticed on Russ's diagram, when he outlined the, uh, roads and stuff, that, um, tree line from Colonial to the fire station was marked as our responsibility, the road.
I thought that was for landscaping.
It is.
Not the road, not the road, the landscaping is what, I, I saw the same thing. I was confused. I think it's for the landscaping, not the road.
Well, I, you know, he had, the roads were in brown.
Yeah.
And that was in brown.
But we need to check that to make sure, cause I had a couple of.
Is it, well, is, I was gonna ask, is there a way that we could negotiate with the county to let them have the road?
The road is theirs. The road is theirs. The, the reason why that was highlighted was because as of right now, Pelican is paying for the maintenance of the landscaping on both sides of the road and the median, which we are not obligated to do, but we are doing. And we have done. We have done for twenty years. So that is going to be part of your discussion on Tuesday is, do you want to continue to do that even though you're not obligated to?
Okay, but not the road itself.
No, not the road itself.
And no longer the, the lights.
It's basically the same thing that we have with Gateway.
Chelsea just got rid of that.
Right, I know, about a month or two. You did that and it's the counties, cause we had to bring them up to a certain standard, the electric work in between and all that, so, okay, I know that, but.
The sidewalks, the curbs, the roadway, we're not responsible for. You guys just maintain the landscaping. So if we need to better make, if we need to make that more clear.
Well, I, I don't know if that's actually, you know, because the reason I'm bringing up, it's Pelican DRI has a multi-modal ban, not from the firehouse, but from tree line and Pelican Reserve Boulevard down to Wyndix.
Yeah.
It's not completed yet, only passed C five, but eventually it's gonna be completed. That's the, the mode our golf carts will be on across tree line and go to Wyndix.
That's how you got that deal.
Yeah, that's a, that's a, that's a.
Is that a requirement, the maintenance requirement as part of the approved DRI? All right, we'll look into that before, before Tuesday.
Yes, but I don't recall, typically DRI, DO, just as a cap.
Construct it, then, you construct it and then the municipality is responsible.
Yeah, cause we use that as the basis of doing the one of hidden links.
Yeah, I mean, C five, they would do, because they weren't going through it.
We'll look into that before Tuesday.
So is there any way we can try and unload that on somebody?
Absolutely.
No, the, the, the landscaping and everything?
I was gonna say, watch what you get because the county won't. They'll let it go to pot.
No, you can't talk to them.
We're okay with that.
Thank you, Carol.
Carol, you and I can talk about that before Tuesday if you'd like. But yes, we're not obligated, we do it. Part of that is setting your standard level of service and to Bob's point, we've had the standard level of service for twenty years. The point of, again, like everything with this assessment methodology, we're reviewing it all, we need the board to make a policy on it.
And we did try to separate that, that portion, like in the landscape bit, so we know exactly what it costs to take care of that. And then it's easy, if you guys decide we don't want to do this anymore, we just tell them, landscape, stop.
But we got the canal between us and Colonial, it's.
So one of the other points, one of the other points is with that, and it's something to think on and Bob's gonna snarl at me when I say this. So typically when a community installs a, a perimeter wall, you're required as part of your development order to have a landscape buffer on that perimeter wall. And determining whose responsibility and who should pay for that is also what will be discussed.
Which side, both sides?
On the outside.
Outside.
Is a part of the discussion. So using Gateway Greens, Gateway Greens does the hedges of budding that wall.
We've got a pie foot.
But Gateway services most. So we don't maintain the hedge line, same thing with Timber Ridge, we, but we mow the grass, cause that's.
And right now, the only wall is.
So you go.
You have a wall.
Not, not on the, uh.
Tell us, you have a wall, hold on.